Good evening, everyone. My name is Jerry Cochran and I'd like to call the City of Pasco Planning Commission to order. I'd like to welcome everyone in attendance tonight. Thank you for coming out tonight. We love to see the public input, so thank you. I'd like to start by asking everyone to join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. To begin tonight, we'd like to ask the clerk to call the roll.
Tanya Bowers. Present. Paul Mendez. Absent. Kim Larriman. Absent. Abel Campos.
Present.
Isaac Myram. Absent. Rachel Teal.
Present.
Jay Handler.
Present.
Jerry Cochran.
Present.
Mr. Chair, there are five members present and we do have a quorum.
Thank you. The Planning Commission is an advisory board made up of volunteers that are appointed by the city council. The purpose of the Planning Commission is to provide recommendations to the city council regarding changes to the city's comprehensive plan, land use updates, block grant allocations, and zoning code. The Planning Commission is tasked with considering the long-term growth and development of the community, the impact of land use decisions on the community, livability, economic opportunity, housing affordability, public services, and the environment. I'd like to remind the audience that tonight's proceedings are being broadcast live on the City of Pasco's Facebook page and on Spectrum Charter Cable, PSC, Channel 191, and will be re-broadcast several times during the next month. The meeting is also recorded and you can watch it on the City of Pasco's website, which is pasco-wo.gov. You can click on the video on-demand link and make the selection of the meeting there. There are copies of the meeting agenda available online on the City of Pasco website as well, so you can follow along with the meeting. At this time, I'd like to ask the audience to mute your cell phones, so we won't be interrupted, if you could. That'll help prevent interruptions in our meeting. For those present this evening who are going to testify, first of all, we have a large agenda and a packed house, which I said is great, but please be patient with us. And also, as you come up and raise your hand when you would like to speak or your item that you want to speak on, come up and speak clearly into the microphone, state your name and city of address for our records. Before we begin tonight's meeting, I need to remind the audience and the Planning Commission that Washington State law requires public meetings like this one to be held this evening not only to be fair, but also appear to be fair. In addition, Washington State law prohibits Planning Commission members from participating in discussions or decisions in which the member have a direct interest or either may be benefit or harm by the Planning Commission's decision. Any objection to a Planning Commission member hearing any matter on tonight's agenda needs to be aired at this time, or it will be waived. First, are there any Planning Commission members who have a declaration at this time regarding any of the items on the agenda? I believe Commissioner Handler, you had one you wanted to state?
Yes. Yes, I need to recuse myself from the CPA 2022-012 application.
Thank you. I also just will make a declaration that two of the community development block grant applicants tonight, I have one of them, Domestic Violence Services, I'm on the Board of Directors, and Grace Kitchen, I'm a friend and supporter of Grace Kitchen, so I'll just make that declaration. And we won't be voting on community block grants tonight, but just so that's made declaration, we'll make that same declaration when we do vote on the future time. Are there any other declarations at this time from commissioners? All right. Second, is there anyone in the audience this evening who would object to any of the Planning Commission members from hearing any of the items on the agenda? Thank you. Let the record show, there were no declarations. So we value your input here. We, as a Planning Commission, need that value and input. It helps us to understand the issues more clearly that we're managing and dealing with and make better recommendations to the city council. Furthermore, in many cases, your input here at this meeting, Planning Commission meeting, is the only opportunity to get your facts and opinions placed on the record, the official city record of the City of Pasco, we'll use to make his decision. I encourage you to take full advantage of this opportunity. The next item on our agenda tonight is the approval of the meeting minutes from the May 19th, 2022 Planning Commission meeting. These minutes were mailed out to the commissioners ahead of time. I trust you had an opportunity to read them. If there are no issues, or questions, or feedback on the minutes, I would entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes from last month.
Commissioner Handler, I make the motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Commissioner Handler. Do I have a second?
This is Tanya Bowers. I second the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Bowers. It's been moved by Commissioner Handler and seconded by Commissioner Bowers. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any opposed? So let the record show that the meeting minutes were unanimously approved. Thank you, everyone. We have no unfinished or old business, so we'll move right into the public hearing. And we have a full public hearing tonight and a full house, so we'll move through these things. The first item are the block grant applications in both the community block grant development. We'll start with that, which is master file BGAP 2022-003. And I believe you're going to start us off.
Good evening, Planning Commission. First tonight, I will be discussing BGAP 2022-03, the 2023 CDBG work plan. Go to the next. Thank you. The outline for the grant program is HUDD approves the five-year consolidated plan. Each year of the consolidated plan, we submit an annual action plan, which carries out our annual goals and objectives for the program year. At the end of each fiscal year, we submit the CAPR, which is the Consolidated Annual Plan Evaluation Report, which evaluates all of our goals and objectives for the year. Throughout the process, citizen participation is mandatory and encouraged. The consolidated plan was approved in 2020 and it's for the year 2020 to 2024. The goals are increase and preserve affordable housing choices, community, neighborhood, and economic development, and homeless intervention, and public services. The estimated funds for this year will be, the entitlement is $699,987. Prior year funds and program income come out to be $224,971, with available funds for 2023 coming to $924,958,000. With the estimated funds that we have, we received 18 proposals received this year totaling So we have a deficit of $1,191,542. On the next slide, we have broken down by percentages of the project type. And on the next slide, this is the timeline. So we have, May 27th, the application deadline, on June 16th, which is today. You will be hearing from the applicants. They will be giving a brief presentation. There is no action needed tonight, as you guys will be making the action at the next meeting. Then it goes to a council city workshop, then action, and then we will end our public comment period for the 2023 annual action plan, and then everything gets submitted to HUDD. So with that, I believe our first applicant is going to be from Public Works. It's on the Lewis Corridor, 2nd to 5th, and that's John.
Good evening. My name is John Padvorick. Home address, 108735, East 228 PRSC in Kennewick. And I'm with you here this evening to talk about the Lewis Corridor from 2nd to 5th So this project is something our department is very excited about. It's essentially connecting other investments that have already been made by the city to create a continuous improved downtown core. As you can see on the plan and phase key, this corridor would serve to fill the gap between the new Lewis Street overpass, which has bicycle facilities, and it's a new roadway, and the Peanuts Park project. So really, connect those two features that by themselves are great, but this, you know, relative to those small investment would help make sure that there's a continuous bicycle and pedestrian core downtown that's well-lit and really gotten a good facelift. And we feel that this would be the boost that could really help downtown pick up after the construction of these projects. And our goal is to get adequate funding so that we can construct this during the timeline of those other projects, so that once the dust has settled literally, then all of this work is done and we don't have to go back and, you know, keep piecemealing work, but we can go through and basically from start to finish, start it with the Lewis Street overpass, go down Lewis Street, and work through Peanuts Park, and have that work be done so businesses can get back to business. There's been a number of alternatives talked about. There's still some discussion ongoing with the downtown master plan of which alternative we would pursue. There's alternatives for whether there would be bike lanes on Lewis or not, and if not on Lewis, how we would route bikes through downtown. So we actually have a separate process going on from this project of developing a bike and ped plan for downtown and figuring out really how we want downtown to be developed and grow. So this project is really the fundamental ground for the next probably 50 years of downtown development. So here's another graphic, just different configurations of where pedestrians are and where bicycles are, and how large sidewalks are. So this is a graphic showing some of the discussions that are ongoing about circulation and bicycles. It's still very much in the works. I think it's been finalized yet, but we're taking a hard look at it to make sure that what we do is actually what downtown needs. The vision is fairly broad in terms of what we've shouldered on ourselves to bring this to downtown through this project. So we anticipate a lot of economic revitalization by a lot of improvements downtown that would fix a lot of problems people have, really good lighting, good improved streetscape that then encourages investment from businesses. It would honor the local cultural considerations, and also the area that this would benefit is a disadvantaged census tract. So it would have the benefit of investing money in an area that would benefit a lot from our investment. And it also, the design would take into consideration the liking of having festivals and events there, and improve the area for those purposes as well. And I believe our ask was for $650,000. We could make do with less if there wasn't enough to go around. We have a pretty big gap between, you know, current funds, we're pursuing other funding, and the funds we would need to do the best thing for the community. So we'd like to have as much as we could, so that we could just ask what people want and do that, and not have the restriction of trying to carve back neat features because of budgetary considerations. And with that, I won't hold you guys any longer. Does anybody have any questions?
Commissioners, any questions for the applicant?
Just a quick one. Is this in sync with the proposed master plan of downtown? Are you in sync with them?
We are, yeah. I'm actually working closely with Jacob as he goes through that process. So I've attended some of their meetings where it's a balance, because we essentially don't want to flavor their outcome with our, we worked through at least early phase of the project, and there was a lot of different opinions about which direction the project should go that were more planning level. So I took a step back and he's taking the lead, but I've been coordinating closely with him to make sure that that process, you know, can use the knowledge that we acquired during our project, and then also we're working with our engineer to make sure that the outcome of that is physically constructable, so we don't go through a process that looks good on paper, but then gets stuck in the design phase. So, yeah, we're working very closely with them. Thank you.
Any other commissioners for this applicant? I had one, I mean, it sounds like you already thought of this, but given that $600,000 is like two-thirds of our available money for the year, you've thought out some more of a phased approach or modular approach, I guess, where you could say, hey, what if we only got $100,000 or $200,000? Would you, if you got ideas for that, I assume?
Yeah, so our biggest goal is to get from 2nd to 4th, because that connects the old pass to Peanuts Park.
That's the priority.
That's the priority. Our current budget request would take us all the way to 5th, and there's another capital project in the books to go from 5th to 10th.
Okay.
So we were hoping to get that one block, so we didn't have this cascading, you know, bureaucratic issue of projects that don't connect and having to fill that gap back up somehow. But, yeah, we had looked at just going to 4th.
All right. Thank you very much, and thank you for your proposal and presentation.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Next.
Next is the Girl Scouts. So you have to... Oh. So can I play, can you play the video first? Or can you play it here? And then somebody else?
I know that parents want their girls to be leaders, because girls are leaders. They're strong leaders. We just need to give them the tools, and that's what Girl Scouts does.
I hope that every girl takes away from her Go-Geter Girl Scout experience the belief that she is a leader.
My name is Marelli, and I'm a junior Girl Scout. I just started, but I'm probably gonna stay here for a long time. I think this was a fun ceremony. It represents a lot about the Girl Scouts. It shows what Girl Scouts truly mean. Like, every candle, they say all about what Girl Scouts do to make the world a better place for a lot of people. They change the world.
We have done in Tri-Cities in six months what it has taken us eight years to build here in Spokane. It was an incredible thing on the first day of sign-ups, where we expected 10, there were over 75 girls there. And that day, we said, wow. I drove home and I called up my COO and I said, hire, hire, hire.
The actual programming that these girls participate in is really no different than any other Girl Scout troop that we have run by volunteers or caregivers.
There's just a lot of areas of our council where there's just not the time or the economics for volunteers to stand up and take care of their girls. So we come on there and say, we're here, we'll provide you the staff and the resources to make a difference for your girls. That's what Go-Geters is all about.
¿Cómo sientes que tu hija está en el programa de Girl Scouts?
Para mí, se mete en un programa.
She's very happy and very proud that her daughter is part of a program that is helping her grow socially, is helping her be strong, and it's helping her with character.
And do we have the applicant here at all? Great.
Is it under Julie?
Julie, are you available? It appears yourself muted.
It's Brian.
Brian?
He's supposed to be muted. He needs to come in.
Okay, I'm here. Hey, thank you. My name's Brian. I'm the CEO of Girl Scouts of Eastern Washington and Northern Idaho, the proud CEO. Did you, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great. Hey, thank you for playing that video, and I just, I just wanted to say, that's a snapshot of what we did since this line last year. Last July, we have, we are centered out of Spokane. We have 3,000 girls across 65,000 square miles, and our focus, our focus in the last year has been, our focus in the last year has been...
Okay, let me message that and see if it's...
Sorry about that. I just had my phone just come on. Our focus in the last year has been Tri-Cities. In fact, we started a store across from Dust Devil Stadium here in the January timeframe, and so we've been working really, really hard. We've hired three bilingual speakers, but last July, Women Helping Women came on board and said, you know what, let's do this. And they gave us a grant, and we were able to go full start in Marie Curie Elementary and Maddam Bergy Elementary, and we were able to see what you saw there, a Go-Geter program, where we provide after-school programming for girls who want to come, that no matter what socioeconomic conditions are out there, we allow them to learn how to be a girl of courage, confidence, and character, and make the world a better place. So I appreciate you all, Pasco, to be able to help us, to help us have an opportunity. We do understand the CDBG grant process. We did a grant process with Richland here earlier this year. This is our second time through. But our home station for starting this Go-Getting program was Pasco. We honor the Pasco School District for allowing us to be community award partners here just recently, and we appreciate them making it all happen. And we're coming to the city to say, if there's an opportunity for $15,000 to allow us to expand this program, to make it available for more girls out there, and allow them to see how they can make the world a better place, and more importantly, to have a girl voice, we would appreciate it. So I'll just close by saying, I don't know all the other applicants out there, but we appreciate our youth and how they're so important to our world, and so any applications out there that are youth-related, we Girl Scouts will stand behind, whether it be ours or another. But again, thank you, Pasco, for helping our girls. We bridged last weekend across the cable bridge. It was a great sunny day, and it just shows all of us that when you have Girl Scouts in the picture, loose guys are ahead. Thank you, Pasco, for listening to our application.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, are there questions for the representatives from Girl Scouts?
Yeah, it's Commissioner Campos.
Go ahead.
Yeah, with the, if we do give you the grant, $15,000, how much more girls will be able to participate in this program? And I know you mentioned two other schools. Would this money also be allocated to reach out to other of our Title I schools in our city?
Yes, it would. We put in there for another, for another 60 girls. We definitely are stabilizing, as you did see in that video. We, we have been doing this in Spokane since the 2014 timeframe, and we got this program built up to about 75% of what Spokane was in nine months. So it was, it was quite a surprise at the response that we had from every, from the area. So we definitely want to expand, and I do think picking up another school would be the right direction going. So that additional money would allow us, we also have, we're also finalists again with Women Helping Women. So thanks again for giving us a shot, and the more girls we reach, the better, the world is better for it. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Any other commissioners with questions for Girl Scouts? All right, thank you for your presentation. We'll move on to the next.
Thank you, commissioners, and thank you, Mariana, down there for representing us, and to all the applicants out there. We appreciate your community much. Bye-bye.
Next is Grace's Kitchen.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. My name's Greg Cullen. I'm a volunteer helping out Grace Kitchen. Mr. Chairman, like you, I'm a friend and a supporter, a fan of Grace Kitchen, my wife, and I've really come to fall in love with this, what they do, and my wife is now the chairman of the Board of Directors, and I help out wherever I can. And I have with me tonight Amanda Lorraine, the founder and executive director. Our project, who we are, I want to talk a little bit about who we are. For those that don't know, it's a ministry that was founded in 2020, doors opened in 2020, that offers hope and lasting change to women. As we say here, the most marginalized women in our society. And really what that means is we're talking about women who are survivors of trafficking, addiction, poverty, and homelessness. And the way we offer this change is through offering them employment, mentoring, job training, and community. And this approach that we use is lever, is really leveraging experience around the country from programs that have been very successful in doing this. We've had the opportunity to benchmark them, understand how they do it, and model after what they've done. In just over two years since our doors opened, we've had over 130 women that have attended our weekly Thursday production day, 12 women that have been employed, with nine women currently employed, and two women that have graduated out of our extensive program and are currently in permanent full-time living wage jobs. How we do it, really, it's a very structured program that works the applicants and employees through several phases. First of all, we require them to come and volunteer on these production days. They have to demonstrate a consistent attendance as a volunteer before they can be hired. Once they're hired, they're put into a formal program, a multi-phase program that includes things like specific job skills training, interviewing skills, self and employee management, leadership of others, the Microsoft Office Suite basics, career aptitude assessments, and as they finish each phase, they go through an assessment by them, with themselves and the staff, to kind of understand their progress. When they're ready to graduate from the program, then they get assistance in finding a permanent job in the community. Our building, if you don't know, our building is the old Union Gospel Mission Men's Shelter that we purchased and rehabilitated. If you've not seen what these, what they have done to transform this building, I encourage you to do it. It's amazing what that building looks like today and what a difference it is in that area of the community. The building is own-debt-free, but, and has additional space that right now we're not able to use. Because of the age of the building, it does not have fire suppression system, sprinklers in particular, which limits our usage on the second floor of the building. It also does not have adequate HVAC on the second floor of the building to maintain, you know, habitable temperatures year-round for purposes up there as well. Some of our, some of the work that we do does require temperature controls, it's food production and things like that, so it does require good HVAC systems. So it's limiting the opportunities we have and can provide to women, and how many women we can hire. So our needs, we're asking for some help with a one-time project, so we're not, this application would not create any sort of ongoing dependence on these program or ongoing requests to fund what we do. It's a one-time request for a project to help us provide that fire suppression system for both the first and the second floor. What the, what the city has told us is that we have to sprinkle both the first and second floors, be able to use the second floor, because the egress is on the first floor, and then the HVAC system for the second floor. As we say in our application, we estimate this would allow us to hire 10 additional women in 2023, enter them into our program, which is significant for us. Why this project? This, you know, there's several things, benefits that this provides to the community. Number one, we're reducing the number of women that are trapped in this cycle of poverty, prison, and homelessness. Help them break out of that cycle. Second, of course, we're changing lives as we do that. And then thirdly, as we reduce that number of women in that cycle, we then also increase the number of women contributing positively to the community as they're able to get out and take full-time jobs and oftentimes now get into permanent housing. We see a lot of times where they're able to be restored with their children and their families and get back to a normal life. And then finally, provide a place for more women to pay it forward. One of the things that's powerful about this is, once women have been through the program, this is their family, this is their community of support, and they come back and give back to the women that are coming through later and provide that support for them as well. And that's it, so thank you. Any questions you have, we'll take.
Awesome. Thank you for your presentation. Commissioners, do you have questions for the Grace Kitchen team?
Just a comment, you sound like you have your hands full rehabilitating that building.
Yeah, there's a pretty incredible story about that. I don't know if you ever heard that. Got a lot of publicity at the time, but early on in the pandemic, actually, we were ready to start rehabilitating that building, and struggling to find workers that could come in and do that. At the same time, the lodge down in Columbia Point area of Richland received some of the funding to retain, be able to pay their employees, but obviously, they didn't have customers at the lodge. And so they had, they were able to pay their employees, but they didn't have work for them, and they pulled together their employees, their employees volunteered to come over and spend their paid hours helping rehabilitate... At the same time, the Lodge down in Columbia Point area of Richland received some of the funding to retain, be able to pay their employees. But obviously, they didn't have customers at the Lodge. And so they had, they were able to pay their employees, but they didn't have work for them. And they pulled together their employees, their employees volunteered to come over and spend their paid hours helping rehabilitate that building. And it's, it's just an incredible story of the community coming together to really do that. But again, you should come take a look at it. It's amazing what they did. It's a neat old building.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners? Same question. You know, obviously, the 225,000 is almost a third of our total years. Do you have an idea of like your priorities? Would you do the fire suppression and then the HVAC? Or HVAC and then fire suppression? Or, you know, how about that?
Yeah, as I mentioned, the challenge with the fire suppression is, you know, only doing one floor does us no good. It doesn't allow us to expand our work because if we do the first floor, we still can't use the second floor. And we, we can't just do the second floor without doing the egress floor. So that's a challenge. Depending on the size of the award, we might prioritize the HVAC to just provide the steadier temperatures. But it would not allow us to get the benefit we're talking about because we still would not be able to use it for the expanded services. It would just allow us to have some, some meetings and training exercises up there, but with, without the ability to expand the hiring.
Thank you. Any other questions from the Commissioners? Okay. Well, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Next is Habitat.
Good evening. My name is Jett Richardson. I'm the Executive Director for Habitat for Humanity Tri-County Partners. My address is 2021 Fairway Court in Richland. And our administrative office is in, is at 313 Wellesian Way in Richland. Although those addresses are in Richland, we do the bulk of our projects as Habitat in Pasco. So I will get on way with my presentation. Also, for the record, I would just like to say I too am a friend and supporter of Grace Kitchen and community partnerships with Grace Kitchen. Projects that the CBDG grants can help have a ripple effect and a much greater impact on your dollars across the community. So North Wheehee, this is, this is the street, street screenshot of North Wheehee. And this is where we are proposing our application take place. It was, last year, it was clear that it was, or it became clear that we, our, our application is not for home construction. You're not providing the funds for the new construction homes. It's for materials costs and specifically for the streets and sidewalks for North Wheehee to extend all the way up to Salt Lake Street. So there's seven lots that we've purchased on the, on the east side of Wheehee where that will be extended up above Highland. And these are the homes that we anticipate to start construction early 2023 and end by spring 2024. Again, the CBDG funds will go towards the streets and sidewalks first, then towards material costs, lumber, and housing, house trusses. Those are not the full cost of any of those projects. Just a portion of it that we're hoping that the City of Pasco will support. We hope to have seven homes. This will impact 28 to 35 people. The reason that we don't have the exact number of people that will be living there is that we're still in the application process for those homes. We've approved two families so far. Both of them are, have four and five family members. And that tends to be the average of the, the size of family that we work with best. So we hope, we hope to have families up, we hope to have up to 35 people living in those seven homes. And so, but that's the reason for the range there. A little bit about Habitat, I won't go into too much detail. But we do, we serve households in the Tri-Cities that are 30 to 80% area median income according to HUD designation. So for a family of four at 30% AMI, that means they're earning around $27,000 a year. For a family of four at 50%, it's about $43,000. And for a family of four at 80% AMI, that's almost $70,000. And this is important as you realize what the cost of housing is in our community right now. The last little bit about Habitat that I'll just mention, and I want to be very clear, it's often miss, it's misconceived that we give homes away. We, we do not give homes away. And in fact, each, each successful applicant in our program has to meet a minimum of three criteria. The second criteria is the ability to pay back a low-interest mortgage. We partner with Yakima Federal Savings and Loans. They have a program exclusively for our Habitat families. And they provide an accessible mortgage package at an affordable, affordable rate for the family. The unmet need in the community. So this goes back to, to what, what our families make between 30 and 80% AMI. Currently, and this is, sorry, this is blocking a part of our slide, but in May of this year, the average home price in Pasco was $436,000. That was 150,000 more than last year. And also in May, the, sorry, 118,000 up from last year. Also in May, at the time that we were collecting this data for our application, there was only one home, and this was on May 6th, that was listed under $300,000. So obviously, a family in the low, low-income range will never be able to afford that. Moderate house cost burden, this is 42% of Pasco renters or 373 renters that are paying over 30% of their income in housing, their gross monthly income in housing. Severe house cost burden, this is 16% of Pasco residents renters that are paying over 50% of their house, of their income in housing. The average rent for a two and a three-bedroom home, our apartment, is just under 15 and just over, under $1,800 a month. A Pasco resident that is at 80% AMI earns $5,821 per month. They're paying 43% of their monthly income on housing costs, which leaves only 57% for other important things like health and food. So this is a moderately housed, housing cost burden segment of the population. It's more impactful on the 50%. This is, they earn about $3,600 per month. They're paying 69% of their monthly costs in housing and, or monthly income in housing and 31% for food and other necessities. So. You know, why Habitat? We provide a responsible monthly mortgage payment. We don't create long-term benefits for renters and their families. Rather, we are creating benefits for building wealth for their, their, these families and their next generations. And our Habitat Affordable Mortgage payments benefit the homeowner and their children again by creating wealth. Sorry, I lost my train of thought there for a second. Again, we are looking to, the, the first dollar that we get from this grant will go towards the streets and the sidewalks. I want to make sure that that's very clear. As we look back at the map, you can see there's a lot of need for some access between Salt Lake and Highland, between the different schools, and just walkability for children going to and from. I will stop there because I think I've gone over on my time. But I welcome any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions for Jett and the Habitat team?
Hi, this is Commissioner Bowers.
Go ahead.
And thank you so much, Jett, for this presentation. Can you talk a little bit more about the racial, ethnic demographics of the individuals or families that, that go into contract with you on these houses?
Sure. So I can, I will be happy to follow up with the Commission in a, with more exact percentages with the racial and ethnic background of our families. But the majority of our families recently have been recent immigrants from Myanmar. The last project that we just finished on Cedar Avenue in East Pasco was 11 homes. Six of them were families from Myanmar or Karen-speaking refugees that have been in the community for, on average, about five, five years at least. We have families from Iraq, Saudi Arabia, Mexico, two families, and one family from New Jersey. So if you're interested in where the most diverse neighborhood in Pasco might be, I would welcome, I would happily give you a tour of the Cedar Avenue area. But for the most part, the low, we are not exclusively serving, here to serve families of minorities or colors, minority ethnic groups. It's just, that's the nature of who our low-income residents are.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Campos. Can you give us just a understanding of how many applications usually come through the process? And then what is your outreach strategies in, in just informing the community about this program?
So for the most part, because, you know, we're a staff of about eight full-time people, our outreach regarding homeownership program has been largely word of mouth. It's been through volunteers who have come to help build our homes, through their churches, through other organizations like World Relief and Elijah Family Homes, Domestic Violence Center. We hope to help serve the women coming out of Grace Kitchen. But it's through those programs that we are able to let the people know that we're here and we can help support them in their next step. So largely word of mouth. And we're, we're certainly open to suggestions on how to get more people aware of our program. But we are certainly not lacking in applicants right now.
Thank you. Any other questions, Commissioners? All right. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Do we have somebody here from domestic violence?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Andy Pacheco. I'm the Executive Director of Domestic Violence Services of Benton and Franklin Counties. We're honored to come before you to present the opportunity to share possibilities of bringing domestic violence services to the residents of the City of Pasco. Domestic Violence Services of Benton and Franklin Counties was founded in 2003. It is the only domestic violence program in Benton and Franklin Counties. Our services provide a 24-hour crisis line, an emergency shelter, and a wide range of services for youth and adults in English and Spanish to promote survivors and their families of safety and well-being. This is the first time in over 20 years of services that we are reaching out to the City of Pasco for collaboration with the possibilities of a domestic violence satellite location for services outside Benton County. Our mission is to create a healthy community free from all forms of domestic violence. We envision an inclusive community free from violence and oppression, where people are free to live and love as they choose by aiding and accessing to housing options, financial assistance to get safe housing, social services for basic needs, and safety planning. It is culturally relevant and in the language of clients. Our program helps our families set up plans for future regardless of gender, race, ethnicity, age, and any other bias. In this way, we address health and financial inequity, racism, and discrimination. We are currently serving 269 students in prevention programs in nine Pasco schools, including elementary, middle schools, and high schools at this time. With a free summer program coming in the next few weeks, we are anticipating over 30 students participating from both counties. The annual clients from Franklin County average is 811 with over 10,700 hours of advocacy services to them. We receive over 600 calls annually from Franklin County. We service over 3,000 clients per year for domestic violence. Domestic violence offers effects of all races, cultures, genders, and cuts across socioeconomic lines. Yet people living in poverty are twice as likely to experience domestic violence. People of color are statistically more likely to live in poverty. People of color and those of LGBTQ population are two to three times more likely to experience domestic violence. Over 50% of Domestic Violence Services of Benton and Franklin County clients are Hispanic, multiracial. People of color, 90% are female. 94% of the people served live below the poverty levels. A person living in a domestic violence situation often finds themselves homeless with little or no income. Client safety is a priority along with social and emotional well-being by finding them shelter or helping them stay in their own home. With a safety strategy, services are 24/7 free of charge, confidential, and driven by the client. We're here to ask the CDBG grant as our, as an applicant for $70,000 for two advocates that are of low-income population to help us service 800 families throughout the year for domestic violence services, including services in schools for our youth prevention programs. Is there any questions?
Thank you. Commissioners, are there questions for Domestic Violence Services of Benton Franklin? Just a question, because I don't know this, maybe I should know this because I'm involved. What the two, the two advocates, those, those will be dedicated to Pasco in the satellite office? Is that clear? Is that correct?
Yes, it would be for the whole City of Pasco. And it would be too low-income population for that and to service up to 800 more clients.
Excellent. Thank you. Commissioners, going once, twice? All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. I don't know. Somebody's here from the YMCA?
I'm Steve Allen. I'm with YMCA, reside in Kennewick, Washington, at 8617 West Third Avenue. And we have been in partnership with the City of Pasco for about the past 40 years, running the Martin Luther King Center as an after-school program and weekend and summer activity for the kids in that community. Obviously, COVID took us down quite a bit, but the kids are bouncing back. One of our largest single programs is the indoor and outdoor soccer program that we run about 44 weeks out of the year. This is a competitive program that we offer in addition to the drop-in center at the King Center. King Center serves about 2,300 students throughout the year that come in to drop into the facility, participate in activities, and various things that we do over there. We also provide the weight room. We have a computer lab, game room, in addition to the gymnasium. This is one of the few indoor gyms in this community. And it is used year-round by our programs as well as City of Pasco programs on evenings and weekends. Starting here a couple of days ago, we engaged our summer school activity hours. So we're opening the afternoons to the kids and the families to be able to come in and drop in. One of the key differences between us and some other programs is the families welcome to participate as well. So it's very common to see parents and kids come in to play pool, play some other activities, utilize the computer labs, things like that. The partnership and what the city provides is the facilities. The Y then provides the programming ongoing with that. All of our staff that have been with the center are averaging about 18 years. Some of the staff have been with us for 21 years. They grew up in the East Pasco neighborhood. They come from that neighborhood. They know the kids and the families. So it's a very tight-knit group. One of the, the hallmarks of the program, besides that soccer program, which is a key thing, is the growth and development the kids go through as they participate in that. Soccer is a game, but it's the life skills and the avenue for them to learn and to grow through that that we try to provide. We're requesting $25,000 for grant money. That helps us provide year-round programming in addition to leveraging the community donation dollars and the money that the YMCA gets back into the program. We've appreciated the ongoing funding to keep us open, keep those doors there for the kids. So at this point, I want to keep it short, see if there are any questions from the Commissioners.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have questions for Steve and the YMCA team? All right. I guess none. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, sir.
DPDA? Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Rick, and he'll kind of go through the city applications that we have. I'm so sorry, Donna. I, yep, go on. Go ahead. You can go.
Hi, I'm Donna Tracy with the Architrace Cities, and I live at 9904 Winthrop Drive, Pasco, Washington. And this is my friend Jeff. You can say hi, Jeff.
Hi.
Okay, and Jeff's soon to be a Pasco resident. And Jeff has been participating at the ARC, and his mother passed away a long time ago, huh, Jeff?
Yeah.
And now he's been living with his uncle, but his uncle's on dialysis. And, and so Jeff's been coming for years to the ARC.
Uncle town.
Yeah, his uncle's out of town now.
Yeah.
And so we run programs that help families. We are serving 200 special-needs kids this summer with 100 volunteer youth, and I do need a couple runners. So if you know of a track star kid, I got a kid who's an escapee, and I need, so I'm putting out there for grandparents. I need 16-year-old, 16-year-old kid who can run. So anyway, we do summer camps, we serve all the ways to 21, which some of the dollars you give help us scholarship some of those kids. And then we run a year-round program for adults with development disabilities, because childcare doesn't stop for us. And our families need support. Matter of fact, Jeff's going to be moving in with me while his uncle go gets a kidney transplant.
Yes.
And so, but I could not offer that help if we didn't have the ARC program, because I need to still hold on to a job. And so Jeff's going to be hanging out with us for a while. But the ARC's dollars really help. That goes to these families that, we have one program that people live in an adult family home, they only make $60 a month they can have to spend, and that's their bus pass, that's their clothes, that's going out to McDonald's, that's all they get, $60 a month. And so the ARC offers these reduced programs where they have access to getting out. What did you do today?
Played basketball.
You played basketball?
With Mike.
With Mike. And where'd you guys go?
At Pacific Clinic.
Okay, the Pacific Clinic, they donate their, we can go play basketball. The ARC benefits from lots of partnerships to be able to make opportunities for a group that needs help. We ask for your continued support. Does that help?
Thank you.
Okay.
Question, what, maybe I missed this, what is the 9,000 cover?
The 9,000 covers for, coverage for we can pay for reduced funding. So like, when Jeff, his uncle, only pays $60 a month, he's on dialysis, he didn't have any money.
Yeah.
And so Jeff only pays $60, and we provide almost 400 hours of service a year for him. He only pays probably about $1.50.
So it's kind of a scholarship program?
It's a scholarship program.
Awesome, thank you. Commissioners, any other questions for Donna and the ARC? Thank you for being here. Sorry we missed you.
No, that's okay. I don't take it personally. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, I'll be very, very brief, but you've seen all these items before. The first four requests on your spreadsheet there, the administration, the three, three recreational specialists, and the youth scholarship program all involve, well, with the exception of the administration dollars, all involve services to low-to-moderate-income families and/or youth, and they are geared toward recreational programs for youth and including the scholarship program, with the exception of the senior center recreation specialist, which of course is geared for senior citizens. The code enforcement item number seven on your spreadsheet is for additional code enforcement activities in low-to-moderate-income census tracts. And the code and community program number eight on your spreadsheet is for a educational-based program to actually try to reduce or at least establish outreach for both building and code enforcement programs in a more proactive manner. Number 12, the, is the Section 108 debt repayment program. This is the $200,000 per year that the city entered into a contract with HUD so that the Peanut Park pavilions would be demolished and then rebuilt as they have been. So unless the Commissioners have any questions, I'll just pause there.
Commissioners, questions for the city's submissions here? Okay. Thank you. I didn't, I, did we not hear from Pasco Specialty Kitchen? Oh, they weren't here, okay, that's why I missed them. So with that, I think we're done with the Community Development Block Grants, and now we have the Home Funds Allocation, correct? And folks, feel free, if you're done.
Commissioners, yes, so this is the Home Funds. The three cities, Kennewick, Richland, and Pasco are home consortiums. And each year we get funds to help with down payment assistance and also tenant-based rental assistance. This year, the estimated funds is $699,987. With that broken down, City of Pasco's estimated entitlement funds are $188,000. Plus, we receive program income, which is when a down payment assistance applicant has either sold or their transfer of their house has gone to somebody else, they have to pay those funds back. So we're anticipating we're going to get $100,000 from that, which brings our total to $288,000, so we're proposing to do 10 down payment assistant loans at $139,000. The City of Pasco last year was the only city that actually did a down payment assistant loan, and this year we're already working on number two. And then $139,000 goes to tenant-based rental assistance, and then $7,000 to program administration. After discussion and staffed evaluation, it is recommended that the anticipated 2023 home entitlement funds be allocated to the first-time home buyer down payment assistant program. A contingent project for new construction infill or tenant-based rental assistance may also be added if needed to meet timeliness. The activities set forth above would best meet the city's consolidated plan and be most effective in carrying out the objectives for the city in 2023. If conditions of the housing market make it difficult to use the funds as planned, Pasco may consider joining forces with Kennewick and Richland to allocate unused funds for true-to-acquisition and/or infrastructure for low-income rental housing projects as permitted in the inter-local agreement. Your review and recommendation to the city council would be appreciated.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions for Kristen on the, on this item? Hearing none. This item, we're also not voting on right tonight. We're moving on to next month.
Right.
Correct, okay, thank you. All right, I think we're moving through our public hearing agenda. We've got two more items and lots more paper to go through, so bear with us. And this next part, lots of stuff to discuss with the Comprehensive Plan amendments and docket items, and there's lots of folks here to express their opinion. I'd ask you to be succinct and as brief as possible, because we have a lot of folks to get through on both sides of any issue. And so what we're going to do is we're going to kind of have Jacob kind of talk about the whole package, and then we'll kind of have folks come up on individual dockets and speak, if that's still agreeable to staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to make a, a brief comment before Mr. Gonzalez.
Absolutely.
Tonight is not for the Planning Commission to consider the merits of a proposal. There are no projects proposed at this point. It is to set a docket, a schedule, because this process will take us well into summer and the fall season. There will be multiple opportunities for both Planning Commission and City Council input for the public and for applicants. But tonight is to set the docket for considering during the summer and fall season.
Yeah, and I think my intention is to have the Commissioners hear from applicants and then also set the docket by deciding which ones will be studied and won't be studied. So what we'll do is we'll hear Jacob's presentation on the package, then we'll go through each docket item, and we'll have the presentations from pros and cons. We'll have the Commissioners ask questions, and then we'll make a decision at the end across all of them whether Commissioners want to either study or not study this item. Good? All right, go ahead, Jacob.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission, and as a reminder to the Commission and also for the audience members, the Washington State Growth Management Act limits amendments to the Comprehensive Plan to once per year with very few exceptions, essentially an emergency amendment. The City of Pasco has established a process outlined in the Pasco Municipal Code that allows for proposed amendments to be considered concurrently and considered for the annual docket. So on the next slide, we detail how this occurs, and that considered concurrently part means that all of these applications should be considered as a whole or with each other in mind. So if we had hypothetically all of our applications, we're proposing to remove all of our residential lands and convert to industrial, that could be problematic. And so that's essentially what that means, are we considering these concurrently? There's two components, as Director Rick White mentioned. Tonight is simply to establish and accept the annual docket, and the Planning Commission can make a recommendation for those that they choose to move forward with or not. And then the second component is the actual evaluation, the study of the merits of the, of the applications themselves. There will be a public hearing and public comments accepted throughout the entire process. The public hearing is obviously one tonight, and there will be a follow-up public hearing with the City Council at that date to be determined. So the evaluation criteria that the staff is asking the Planning Commission to use for tonight's recommendation are out of the Pasco Municipal Code, and you may recall that we updated our code in 2020 to comply with the State Growth Management Act, and this is a result of that. And generally, the five questions or criteria are, is there sufficient time for council to make an informed decision on an application? Will the city be able to develop, I'm sorry, conduct sufficient analysis to develop policy and related development regulations associated with any potential land use amendment? Has the proposed amendment been previously rejected for consideration? Will the amendment implement and comply with the Comprehensive Plan in the Washington State Growth Management Act? So does it generally align with the goals and policies of the Comprehensive Plan? And is the proposed amendment better addressed through another planning process? For example, Broadmoor, the city has determined that that would be better addressed through a specific Broadmoor master plan. The next slide, as a reminder on the Comprehensive Plan, it's been maybe a year or so since we've adopted our Comprehensive Plan, but it is a policy document. It is a statement of goals and policies that outline the community's vision for the future, and a part of that document is a requirement that we look at the next 20 years of growth in the community, and we do a significant evaluation on land use, housing, transportation, economic development, parks, recreation, and open space, capital facilities, and public utilities. As a summary of all the applications that we've received this year, we've received 18 total applications. Twelve of those were initiated by either citizens or private applications. Six of those are proposed by the city. No land use amendments have been processed since 2016, and a part of that was the development of our periodic update. And so I think part of the reason for the significant amount of applications is the, the six or so years since the last amendment cycle, and obviously a reaction to the ongoing housing challenges our communities are facing. City applications are automatically placed on the docket, so while there's a public hearing, and we will certainly accept and welcome comments on city applications, they are automatically placed on the docket, they still need to be evaluated. Public notices were distributed on June 2nd. As of about 5:00 PM this evening, we've received 65 phone calls, voicemails, and/or emails or written letters. I think we've responded to about a third of them as of today. And, and obviously, there's a significant amount of audience members here to speak about the proposals themselves. So I just wanted to make that clear, and they are part of the public record as well. So this map, you can see in pink, it may be difficult for some of the proposals, it's showing at a citywide scale, but it sort of represents all of the proposals that we've received, and they're, they're kind of spread out throughout most of the community, some are in the expanded urban growth area. Obviously, the Broadmoor Master Plan, the downtown, and numerous others that could be considered as infill development are, are proposed as well. So kind of a healthy distribution of proposals amongst the entire urban growth area. So with that, in terms of this evening, we will, staff will go over a review of all the applications received, and then we can do a question and discussion with the Planning Commission. A public hearing could be opened, and then we can go back to each application, and they can be discussed, reviewed, and recommended at that time as appropriate.
Jacob, just a question, as you present your summary of each of the applications, will you also help us, inform us on the questions, the five questions, and kind of what? Because I think some of it, like, for example, when you look at the five questions, there are some of these that have been previously rejected, and so, but I don't know that I know all of those, I recognize some of them. And so I think as you, as you go through that, it'd be helpful if you answer, if you help us with those questions, I think, too.
Will do, certainly. So with that, we can go ahead with the First Amendment, and the Planning Commission, actually, you may recall, this was proposed to the Planning Commission during the periodic update process back in 2019 and 2020. And at that time, we asked the applicant to, to hold off while we completed our comprehensive planning effort, and they did. So this is a proposal for a change in land use for approximately 3.8 acres located northwest of Broadmoor Boulevard and Burns Road from medium-density residential to commercial. The environmental determination issued by the city early this month was of non-significance. And so this is kind of where we get back, that this is just a land use-only proposal. There is no project associated that, the city, there's no permit that the city's entertaining or have received, and it's just strictly a land use proposal, and, and this applies to all of these applications this evening. All land use proposals will also require concurrent rezone as well, that goes through its own process. So I can, I can either answer questions right now on each individual one, potentially from the Planning Commission, or I can hold off, or they can be held off to the end, but maybe this is easier since the, the slide has the map and all that in front of you.
Let's go ahead individually, have Commissioners have questions for Jacob as we pass these, that'll probably be more expedient. Commissioners, on the 001?
This is Commissioner Teal. I just had a question. For some reason, I recall it being high-density and looking at a high-density map. Did it change to medium-density, or am I recalling wrong?
So this actually, when we entertained this proposal back a year or two ago, it, it was tied with the Comprehensive Plan, Comprehensive Plan periodic update, but it was also tied with the Broadmoor Master Plan, which had preliminary identified this as high-density residential. The comp plan had a medium-density residential land use associated with it, and the Broadmoor Master Plan is still ongoing. That actually is an application that you'll hear about later this, this evening. But today's current land use is medium-density residential on this particular site.
Thank you.
And so I guess the question, one of the questions would be, since this was or is part of the Broadmoor, is the answer that this should be kept with the Broadmoor plan, or is it?
So the Broadmoor Master Plan is, is, there's a planning effort that is ongoing along with the concurrent environmental impact statement associated with the planning effort. And after the adoption of the Comprehensive Plan, staff and also working with the property owners in that area have decided to reduce the boundary or the general area of the Broadmoor Master Plan to accommodate, and I'll get into this a bit later, with the Broadmoor effort, but to accommodate and account for the fact that there's been a development already occurring, kind of superseded the plan. And so we've reduced it, so this is no longer part of the Broadmoor Master Plan, although obviously being across from it will, could be impacted by it.
Thank you, that's good clarification. Commissioners, any other questions about the Kidwell Proposal or Amendment? Okay, let's go on to the next one, and to keep in mind for the folks in the audience, you will get an opportunity to, as we go through these after staff. you will get an opportunity to, as we go through these, after staff and commissioners review them, we'll go back through them again, and each one will have the folks that want to speak on it be given an opportunity.
So the next proposal is for a land use amendment for approximately just over two acres, located northwest of Argent Road and Road 68, south of Interstate 182. The proposal is to amend the Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map from a low-density residential to a mixed residential and commercial. A determination of non-significance was issued earlier this month, and also want to point out that there has, there have been rezones adopted and approved rezones to the site to the south, and I believe to the west of this particular site for medium-density or, I believe, an R3. So there are associated rezones adjacent to this site. This has not been a proposal that's been brought to the Planning Commission before.
Commissioners, questions on 002, the Jenkelson Amendment? This is where the, this is like McGill's and the cornfield and the coffee stop and that kind of corner?
Correct.
Okay. Commissioners, anything else on this one? All right, next one.
The next proposal is for a future land use amendment from industrial to mixed residential and commercial. It affects various parcels at a toll of approximately 197 acres. This site is located on A Street in between the recent industrial growth in East Pasco. Determination of significance was issued by staff on June 7, 2022, and essentially what that means is the likely requirement of an environmental impact statement to identify the necessary mitigations associated with the proposed land use amendment. And like the others, this has not been proposed to the Planning Commission before.
Commissioners, questions about this one? This one is a determination of significance, so that one's different from some of the others, so. Is there, I guess that's a timing question, too, one of the questions, is there time, kind of thing?
Yeah, it might be hard to answer that right now, but most environmental impact statements, it might be difficult to accomplish that within the remaining timeframe, at least in the rest of this periodic, I'm sorry, this update cycle.
Where are we at on that? How much time we have left in that cycle?
So we, this is an annual amendment, our next periodic update is due June 2026.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any questions about the, this one, 003? Okay.
This proposal is for a land use amendment from low-density residential to medium-density residential. It is located north of Burns Road and west of Broadmoor Boulevard. It encompasses approximately 32.26 acres, and the determination of non-significance was issued on June 7, 2022.
Commissioners? Any questions on 004 from staff? Okay.
This proposal actually takes place in our recently expanded urban growth area, and I do want to mention that our urban growth area is still under appeal. We are not sure about the results of that appeal, but thought it would be important for the context of the overall discussion this evening. It is approximately 40 acres, and the amendment is from low-density residential to medium-density residential, and a determination of non-significance was issued on June 7 of this past, of this year.
Okay, Commissioners? All right.
This proposal is to the immediate south, and the proposal is for an amendment from commercial to mixed residential and commercial. The entire parcel is highlighted, but it only, this particular proposal only covers that red area, which is approximately just under 13 acres. Again, from commercial to mixed residential, commercial land use, and a determination of non-significance was issued earlier this month.
So are these, the reason these are separate from the same folks is they're separate parcels?
Well, separate parcels-
Because they're all joined, right?
They are adjacent-
And you want the same medium, or no, it's mixed and medium?
Yeah, because of the amendment to go to, from each, is a different land use to go to two separate land uses.
Gotcha, okay. Commissioners? All right.
This is a proposal that's located along Road 68, east of Road 68, north in between Clemente on Wrigley, and it's a proposal to go from commercial land use to high-density residential, approximately two and a half acres, and it received a determination of non-significance on June 7.
Commissioners, questions on 007? All right.
This proposal is located on Chapel Hill Boulevard, south of Interstate 182, east of Road 100. It is a proposal to go from commercial land use to a mixed residential and commercial land use. It encompasses two parcels at approximately 4.6 acres, and it received a determination of non-significance on June 7. I should probably also highlight that the mixed residential, commercial land use is our most diverse. It's our most flexible land use. It permits our commercial zoning districts and also our residential districts from R1 to R4.
Commissioners? All right.
This proposal is for an amendment on approximately 19.9 acres, located north of, actually in between two proposed land use amendments that we've heard about already this evening, north of Burns Road, west of Broadmoor Boulevard. And the proposal is for a change from low-density residential to mixed residential, commercial, and it also received a determination of non-significance on June 7.
Commissioners? 009, the Alfred Amendment? Okay.
This proposal is for a land use amendment on about eight and a half acres, located on North 28th Avenue and Court Street, just east of Highway US 395. The proposal is from commercial to high-density residential. It also received a determination of non-significance on June 7.
Okay, 010, McLory, Commissioners?
This proposal is further west on Court Street, just west of Road 68, and it is a proposal on approximately 6.7 acres, from commercial to mixed residential, commercial, and it received a determination of non-significance on June 7, 2022.
Commissioners, is this, oh, that's by Ivy Glade and the fire station? Commissioners, any questions on this one?
Yep, this proposal is located just west of US 395 on Hopkins Street and Road 36. It is a proposal from low-density residential to high-density residential, encompassing various parcels at approximately 5.78 acres, and it also received a determination of non-significance on June 7 of this year.
Commissioners? All right, hearing done?
So now we're into the city, the city initiated applications. This is a proposal that is running before, but concurrently with the development of our first-ever downtown Pasco master plan. And so this is a future land use and text amendment, and it is to establish a specific land use for the downtown Pasco area. It encompasses numerous parcels, approximately 153 acres. An environmental determination has not been issued, yet a determination of non-significance is anticipated. And on the next slide, associated with this application, we highlight just kind of a few things that we've discussed a little bit already with the Planning Commission about the downtown Pasco master plan. Again, with this proposal, this is to establish a land use custom to downtown Pasco. It will require us to update our land use and zoning standards, and essentially provide for flexibility for development, redevelopment, and infill opportunities, and also for business growth as well in the downtown area. And you can see a slide that's been shared with the Planning Commission at a previous report update to the Planning Commission, which is that map, which kind of designates potentially two areas that we can kind of begin to think of our downtown plan. One would be sort of our downtown area, one being sort of the civic area, which we're at right now with the Amtrak Station, Pasco City Hall. Pretty significant, Public Park, Central Park, Volunteer Park, just to the west of us and the county courthouse, and all the Franklin County Historical Museum just to the south of us, and then with the immediate downtown core area that you can see kind of in the rectangular shake, shape right there. So this is a proposal to create a land use for downtown Pasco.
Commissioners? All right, moving on.
This next proposal, again, from the city, is for a future land use map and text amendment to implement the Broadmoor Master Plan, similar to the downtown master plan. The Broadmoor Master Plan will be, is being developed along with the environmental impact statement. Both of those will be presented and hopefully likely receive recommendations from the Planning Commission and City Council prior to the final decision on land use amendments. So the intent is for the plan to be adopted before the land use amendment. Again, covering various parcels of approximately 1,200 acres, that's a reduction. The original area was roughly 1,600 or so acres. So this is a reduction of that, and it's bound by Burns Road, the Columbia River, Interstate 182, and Broadmoor Boulevard. And a determination of significance was issued in March of 2017, and then revised in July of 2021. And on the next slide, just a few details about this proposal. The intent is to accommodate the existing and permitted development. This is a separate, this is a different land use than what is in our current Comprehensive Plan, and it rebalances the household and commercial areas because of the existing and the ongoing development that's occurred both within and outside of the Broadmoor area, but also a pretty big one, which is evaluation and the mitigation of the critical area habitat and shoreline, and particularly shrub step habitat that covers a pretty significant portion of the Broadmoor area, and you can see that new kind of teal color, which signifies kind of an open space transition area. Whereas in the existing Comprehensive Plan, I believe there's a medium-density residential applied, and that simply will likely not occur in the next 10 to 20-year timeframe. And so you can see kind of the direction with the environmental impact statement complete, leading to the master plan being complete, and then to the land use amendment being, receiving a recommendation.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions on the Broadmoor Master Plan Amendment? Is the teal area, you're saying that's a, is that the gravel pit?
Correct.
Yeah, that's what I thought, okay. Questions, Commissioners? Okay.
The next proposal from the city is a map correction, and it is from a commercial to mixed residential, commercial. It might be hard to see here, but it's just, it's along Heritage Boulevard, just north of A Street. You can see the parcels highlighted in that darker red. And essentially, what we have here is a land use that designates this as commercial. However, there are actually existing residential dwellings in that land use, and so this is simply just a map correction. It's approximately 8.13 acres, a determination on the SEPA has not yet been determined, yet a determination of non-significance is anticipated.
Okay, Commissioners, go ahead.
Hi, this is Commissioner Bowers. Jacob, I'm a little, I was confused by that picture, because are all those plaques, have they all been filled already with residential?
No, the ones that are highlighted in that darker red, apologize for how that difficult that might be to see today, actually. But those are existing dwelling units, and so this proposal is to provide the correct land use in the case that a resident may, or homeowner may want to redevelop their home or do something, or something happens to it. Under the existing land use, there's some discrepancies, because technically, it's got a commercial land use, so there should not be residential in there, although we know there's a home there today. So this is what we would call just a map correction. And we did receive a notice from the property owner to the east of this site that we may, that it also suffers from the same error. And so staff will circle back up with the property owner to the east to make sure that if there is a same error taking place there, that we account for that in this correction as well. So it's simply just a map correction.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the Gramgar State's item, Commissioners? Okay.
This is another proposal for a map correction. This one takes place on Court Street between 14th Avenue and 19th Avenue. It's approximately 9.25 acres, and similar to the previous application, this is to amend the land use from commercial to mixed residential, commercial. Today, there's currently residential dwellings, a variety of housing types that are existing there today. So this is a map correction application, and the SEPA determination has not yet been issued, yet a determination of non-significance is anticipated.
Commissioners, questions on the Court Street, 016? All right, two to go.
And similar to the previous two, this one takes place on South 10th Avenue in between A Street and Washington Street, just north of the Cable Bridge. Here, the map correction is to fix the land use. There are existing residential dwelling units and homes in these, on these parcels, and they have an industrial land use, and our application is to amend the land use from industrial to mixed residential and commercial, roughly 4.3 acres. And again, no determination on the SEPA has been complete, issued yet, yet a determination of non-significance is anticipated.
Okay, Commissioners, 017, South 10th Avenue? Okay.
This proposal is again from the city, and it's a text amendment to the Land Use Description and Criteria Table that's in our Comprehensive Plan. It's also in our Pasco Municipal Code, and the intent is to amend a few of our, of the descriptions and the minimum density on the low-density residential and a few other residential categories to account for the recent code amendments that have been adopted by City Council to address housing in our community. And so the low-density residential change is to increase the minimum density from two to five units an acre, to three to six dwelling units per acre. We've allowed various dwelling units to be permitted in the R1, RS12, and RS1 zoning districts, so we believe that this kind of accommodates that change at a practical level. It also removes the strict inclusion of the single-family dwelling unit, since we do allow duplexes in some of the low-density land use zoning districts, if they can conform to the minimum density standards or the maximum density standards. And there was a few other changes on the previous one, on medium-density and high-density residential. There was a removal of the specific housing types. Currently, there's a variety and a long, lengthy list of housing types listed. Rather than call them out specifically, we intend to just list a variety of residential dwelling Rather than call them out specifically, we intend to just list a variety of residential dwelling units. They must conform to the density standards. And the same for the mixed residential commercial, there's a variety of business types and uses that are listed in the land use code, although those are actually regulated by the underlying zoning code. So we don't want to put too much where it's not necessary. So it's kind of an effort to simplify and emphasize the allowance of a compatible mix of commercial, retail, service, and residential uses.
All right, commissioners, 018, last one? Okay, anything else?
Yep, a few, two more slides, and then we can go open up the public hearing, I think. So again, just a reminder, some discussion points that these are land use proposals only. There are no projects, permits, or associated developments that are pending with any of these land use amendments. If they are approved, they will require a rezone. A rezone is a process that is, requires a public hearing with the Pasco hearing examiner, and rezones are authorized by the Pasco City Council. And beyond the rezone, there's still the project level evaluation that happens when an applicant submits a permit to the city of Pasco, and staff evaluates that for mitigation, traffic, environmental impacts, et cetera. This table demonstrates the proposed changes overall to our land use in the city of Pasco based on these changes. And so those in green represent increases, those in that red color are decreases. And you can see the significant increase on the medium density residential and the mixed residential, commercial land uses, and you can see the incorporation of downtown. You can also see the decrease in commercial, fairly significant decrease in industrial land use. And that publicly, public quasi-public, and that's the Broadmoor area, where we're changing some of the land uses there. And the next slide is just the evaluation criteria for the planning commission to have in their minds as, as we go through the individual proposals themselves. So with that, I'll end this presentation, and happy to answer any questions I can from the members of the planning commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob. Commissioners, any questions for staff, Jacob, before we move on to the public hearing? So I think what we want to do is have, we'll go in order from 1 to 18, and we'll have folks come up that wish to speak to an item. With a number of items and a number of folks, I'd ask you to keep your comments as concise and brief as possible. And then we'll also, I'll open it up for the commissioners to ask you questions, if the commissioners have questions for you as well. And then commissioners, we'll also go through this at the end, after we've heard from the public. We'll go through and make our decisions about which ones we will move forward on the docket. But again, this is not, this is a land use only, as Jacob said. So there's lots more to go before anything gets built on any of these or anything like that. All right. We'll start with number one, CPA 2022 001, which is the Kidwell Amendment. And is there folks here to speak on that one? I think commissioners, in your packets, you've got quite a good chunk of letters that were sent, both mostly pro, but you can look through those in your packet. And then if there's anyone that wants to speak on item number one, please come forward at this time. And go ahead and state your name and address for the record, or just the city of address, you don't have to list your whole address.
My name is Deborah Parsons. I live on Silver Bright Drive, Pasco, Washington, which is right across the street from this parcel. I bought my home in 2018. I retired and moved to Pasco to be near my daughter, who's a teacher in the Pasco School District. At that time, we asked the real estate agent about the vacant land across Broadmoor Boulevard. He said it was zoned residential, and more homes would be built there. And that we would be a part of a residential community. In 2020, this Kidwell proposal first came up. And at that time, Mr. Kidwell identified that he wanted to build a gas station convenience store here on this land. And I believe he still wants to do that. In keeping with the integrity of the Pasco city zoning, I would like to see apartments, townhouses, duplexes, or single-family housing built here. I speak for many in the Columbia Terrace subdivision, of which I'm a part, and respectfully ask that this committee deny the Kidwell application and many other land use application that seeks to commercialize land the city of Pasco has already zoned as residential use along Broadmoor Boulevard. We need more housing built, not another gas station. Thank you.
Thank you. Any commissioners, any questions for the presenter? Nope? Others for this item?
Good evening, commissioners. Claude Oliver, Tri-Cities Realty Group, 1919 North 20th Avenue. As you look at the development of the community and how it has progressed, 3,000 new homes back Road 68, 3,000 new homes going in between 68 and Broadmoor. On the other side of the freeway, another 3,000 new homes going in. And you're about to have another 3,000 out in the development area there. One of the key things you need is the ability to have people to get serviced, a quick gas stop, gasoline check out in that area. So I am in favor of the amendment to allow the convenience store. Right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions for the presenter? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm speaking on behalf of Todd and Stacy Kidwell, the applicants for this proposal. My name is Rick Simon, resident of West Richland. And I'm going to focus more on, you know, the placing this item on the docket. I just want to point out that we believe that we have a very complete and thorough application for your review, that it is consistent with many of the goals and policies within the comprehensive plan. And I think it deserves your review in, in this year's amendment cycle. It's also a fairly minor amendment, it's less than four acres. It's not going to require a ton of analysis or, or further study, so. And, and finally, as Jacob had noted, this was not a proposal that had been rejected previously. It had been withdrawn because it was part of the larger Broadmoor subarea plan. So I believe it meets all of the criteria for, for placement on the docket. And we would urge the commission to, to review it within this cycle. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? All right, thank you for being here. Anyone else on item number one, the Kidwell Amendment? Hearing done, we'll go ahead and move on to item number two, which is... I missed, yeah, there you go, the Jenkleson. Is there anyone here to speak on item number two, the Jenkleson Amendment? Go ahead.
Hello. Debbie Tate, Tate Architecture, 7815 West River Boulevard, Pasco, Washington. I'm speaking because my client's too chicken to come up and talk. Mr. Jenkleson resides in Tacoma, but is quite a property owner over here. And one of the parcels he's owned for a long time just north of, I wanted to say Heidi House, McGill's. Anyway, it was recently rezoned. And he also owns these two parcels to the north. The one just north of the parcel that was just rezoned was erroneously double zoned. So we had two zones in one parcel. In order to change that, we had to go through the comp plan, because the left half, or the part on the west, was a higher density. So with that in mind, we had to go through the comp plan, and the parcel to the north of that right against the canal is also his, and he wants to develop the entire parcel portions. And so we had to go through the comp plan amendment for that. We included that, so that we can rezone it the same as the zone zoning that's to the north, to the south. So we have met all of the requirements of the comp plan amendment. This is in compliance with the comp plan amendment. And we just need to go through that process in order to be able to develop the land, which is already zoned, what we want to zone it to the south. Any questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Maybe a question for staff, or if you know, so is the reason it was mixed on is because they just crossed, like, Argent and 68, Road 68 boundaries? Is that how that ended up that way, or?
Up for the proposed land use?
No, for the, what she referred there, trying to correct.
Yeah, I, I don't know if I can, there's a few locations, actually, there's, there's probably several sites throughout the city where there, more than anything, they may be mapping errors, where there's multiple zoning districts, or multiple land uses on top of the same parcel. They zigzag, they meander, it's not really, it essentially could be just be a mapping error. And this might be the result of that, a previous mapping error. So it could almost be technically, at some point, considered a map correction as well, depending on the proposed use, obviously. But there's really no, no reason that I can recall why it's been given to separate zoning districts or land uses.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions for the presenter or for staff on this one, on the Jenkleson Amendment? Is there anyone else to speak on the Jenkleson Amendment?
Sure. I'm Roland Jenkleson. I live in Lakewood, Washington, but I've kind of been very involved in property development, commercial, for the most part, in Tri-Cities for 20 years. And I probably wouldn't have taken your time, except I didn't think I wanted the public record to state that I was too record, too, too, too chicken to, to address you. And mostly, I, I felt that Debbie, who's worked on this situation with Jacob for a long time, probably could explain the the historical confusion that required us to, in order to, after accomplishing the rezone on the larger, the largest parcel, to just clean up these two other parcels, and that's the process. And I thank you for the opportunity to clarify the record with respect to my willingness to stand in front of a microphone. I've done that many times, so thank you very much.
Thank you for being here, and sometimes shame works really well, right? All right, anyone else to speak on the Jenkleson item, or any commissioners have any question, more questions about this one? All right, we'll move on to item number three. Is there anyone here to speak on this item? I don't even want to try, I would slaughter the name, so the orchard one. Is there anyone here to speak on this item? No, there we go.
Good evening. My name's Darrell Moore, JUB Engineers, 3611 South Centway Kennewick. And this was brought up, I think there was a concern about timing of this particular application about completing EIS. And we did prepare an EIS sort of version of a report and provided to staff. I'm not sure if it's been, yeah, that's part of the application documents that planning commission has.
No, we, we did include specific application materials with the, with this, as this is just a docket establishment. But he is correct, no, formally EIS has been completed. They did submit a, a supplemental report to the environmental checklist, though.
So that, that report really provides, discusses the goals of the comprehensive plan, and meets those goals. So I want to make sure, from a timing standpoint, we get the opportunity to be able to complete, if there's any specific further details needed to complete the EIS.
All right, thank you.
Any questions?
Commissioners, any questions? All right, thank you for speaking to us. Anyone else to speak on item number three? All right.
Good evening, Brad Peck, I live in West Pasco. I'll be here speaking on a few different issues this evening, but this particular one, I'll be wearing my Franklin County Commissioner hat. Some of the others will be a personal hat, and I'll be sure and let you know which is which. On this one, 197 acres, Mr. Brochi is working on. It says mixed residential, but I've not heard anything tonight that articulates what the city is going to consider as mixed residential. Would that potentially include high density?
I'll ask maybe Jacob to comment on that.
The mixed residential, commercial land use permits, R1 through R4, so.
All the above.
It, it is, yeah, it is the most flexible land use we have available.
Okay, so then I would encourage, as we look at the, what I think is a short to medium term housing shortage, and we look at adopting long-term permanent solutions, semi-permanent, that we remember that there aren't just 16 acres being added for high density. There's potentially 200 acres of high density right there. And without getting into Mr. Brochi's business, I suspect that much of that will be high density. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners, my name's Matt Adams. I'm Director of Real Estate Local Bounty, residences in Liberty Lake, Washington. I just wanted to voice opposition and concern. We have the property adjacent to the west, local bounty. We, as you know, have tens of millions of dollars that we're investing in that corner of A Street in Oregon, and are really concerned with how this near 200 acre change will affect, you know, traffic patterns to the east. I mean, we did an exhaustive search to find quality industrial land, and that is not easy to find in Pasco or the region that captures all the necessities that a user like us requires. We're concerned, you know, our, our whole emphasis was to be a good neighbor in this industrial zone, and assumed we'd be surrounded by complementary industrial uses, and this really changes the nature of the neighborhood significantly, and we are concerned, as you know, we're breaking ground for the long-term impacts this will have to the, to the area and our, and our operations with this being potentially in, in someone's backyard. Though we're a very clean use, we're very proud of, of how we treat the environment and, and our end product. It's, we just feel this is not a conducive change to the comprehensive plan, and, and have some concerns with how this could meet your strategic policy initiatives. So that's it, thank you, unless there's any questions.
Yeah, I think, so can you, I, I don't think I'm familiar with what, what business or industrial use your property is.
So we're a high-tech greenhouse operator.
Okay.
Headquartered in Hamilton, Montana, we're traded on the New York Stock Exchange. We have, you know, our sweet spot in sites are 25 to 40 acres. I'm actively acquiring properties across the country. This is going to support the Pacific Northwest region. We have a facility in Hamilton, Montana, that captures some of it, but this is going to augment serving Seattle, Spokane, all the major metropolitan. but this is going to augment serving Seattle, Spokane, all the major metropolitan areas. And, you know, we're here for the traffic pattern and, and the proximity to labor, abundant water and the resources that, that this, that this site has. And we're concerned with these, with a high-density residential use directly to the east of us.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions for the presenter?
Thank you.
Thanks. Oh, go ahead.
Have you got another project going on around there right now?
No.
Do you understand?
No, no, no.
Okay.
No, we have nothing else slated in this vicinity.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, anyone else to speak on item number three?
Good evening, my name is Alan Suarez, two-five-one Orchard Room, Pasco. I work for Brochi Family Trust in the community development area. And I think one of the things that I just wanted to bring up is there are some alternatives that have been presented in the supplemental report, that it's not just multi-housing, but we have single residential homes. And so there's three alternatives. Low intensity could be five hundred single-family units. Medium intensity would be four hundred and sixty-eight, and high intensity could be fourteen. That is single-family, whereas opposed to apartments, if you're looking at low intensity, two hundred and fifty-two, medium, four eighty, and high would be seven thirty-six. We are the developers of the adjacent community, the Tierra Vida community. It is, we are long-term developers. We've been there for fifteen-plus years. The, we've had a, several residents, or I should say individuals that have sought out the community to live in. They really appreciate the community. One of the things that they talk about is the low crime rate in the area. And the city of Pasco has used it as an example. City officials, the police department. The other thing is that there's a high need for, for homes in the area, especially affordable homes. One of the things that I've, we've come across is, obviously, we have Amazon that has broken ground. And actually, before they broke ground, we had several inquiries because they were bringing workers into the area, wanting to live in the area. Not to mention that we've had Dairy Gold Reasers that's been three-quarters built, right? So not only Amazon is bringing in fifteen hundred plus employees, we're having an additional eight, eight hundred employees, perhaps, altogether, between Dairy Gold and Reasers. So housing is a big need. Live, work, play in the location. This would reduce transportation issues. They would, they, it would declutter, help declutter the transportation system. One of the things I, I wanted to comment on was that each dollar invested in affordable housing boosts local economies by leveraging public and private resources to generate income, including residential, resident earnings and additional local tax revenues, and supports job creation and retention. Rising rental costs with low vacancy rates and high levels of low-income residents coupled with high home prices and overall high cost of living in the tri-cities region is a recipe for mitigating factors such as job creation in the central business district to reduce overall commuting costs for low-income and minorities residents. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Commissioners, any questions for represented from Brochi? All right, thank you. Anyone else to speak on this item? All right.
Good evening, Commissioners, my name is Stephen Baumann. I'm here speaking on behalf of the Brochis as well. I do live here in Pasco. Couple of things of note for this project. One thing that bringing residential to this area will do is reduce traffic on our greater roadways. The trend seems to be to build north out of Pasco towards west Pasco. And by bringing residential units to this area of town will reduce traffic on our local roads. Another area that I'd like to point out is, this is somewhat of an L-shaped project. I don't know, is there a way that I can put a pointer? So this area right here, the city is in design and intends to go this fall, I believe, to, to construction on, is to build a large soccer field complex. And appreciate the concern of the local bounty folks. With this mixed, mixed use, there is the ability and the intention of providing separation, and some of your packet will reflect that. Been in discussions with the school district. The school district has need for another elementary school and has expressed interest in some ground, and there's been ground intended to be set aside in the, in the magnitude of approximately fifteen acres for a school facility here. There's also been a lot of intention with the, to make it a walkable and a bikeable community for a lot of green space. Don't have an exact number, but it's proposed to be intentional, you know, possibly over twenty acres of green space. And so with the large soccer complex, possibly fifteen-acre school facility with additional large green space, we believe that, that we can, we can appreciate the concerns of the neighbor as far as there being separation from, from their facility, being in an industrial area. And we believe that consideration for not putting additional traffic on, on the highways with, with the idea of a, kind of a new urbanism concept of live, eat, work, play in the same area and not create traffic, we think is, is something that should be taken into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Commissioners, any questions, or if you do, as we're going through these, please raise your hand on the, for the online folks so that Rick can see you. All right, thanks.
One more thing, if you don't mind. As Commissioner Peck pointed out, and, and it is, that is correct, that there's a wide array possible of housing densities. The intention with this is to not have one, but to have a mix of all the different densities to, to the intention is to cover the spectrum from, of incomes, from the lower incomes up to the higher incomes. A very good and well-written article today in the, in the Journal of Business in Pasco talked about this very area, and it'd be worth, worth reading and to talk about the rising value of homes in East Pasco, and this would certainly intend to complement the wide range of incomes, and, and, yeah, thank you.
Thank you for being here. Anyone else on the, okay, one more.
I'll be quick, as I realize my second time, but I just want to clarify and make sure that I didn't give the wrong impression. The Brochi family and now the Brochi Trust have a long, long track record of excellent service in this community, especially in the arena of building communities and housing. I think this is fantastic, I completely support it. And I think what's especially noteworthy is its location. It's not abutting anything else that it has a significant conflict with. This is exactly the kind of place for these sort of planned communities with a mix of housing, and I can't imagine anybody better than the Brochis to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on item three? Commissioners, any questions before we move on? All right, let's move on to item four. Is there any, anyone here to speak on item four?
Good evening, my name is Paul Leventev. I'm the applicant. I live on Henry Street in Pasco. So we're just applying to switch the land use from low-density residential to medium-density residential. As you can see, there's a lot of low-density residential area, land in that area, both to the east and to the west. This just opens up opportunity to present different types of homes for the community and as well prevent from sprawling neighborhoods with low density. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, Commissioners? Anybody else here to speak on item number four?
Good evening, my name is Andrew Leventev. I'm currently building my home on Lamb Court, which this property bumps up against. I just wanted to say that I am for this, and
Thank you for being here. Anyone else? All right, we're moving along to item five. Anyone here to speak on the Oberding number one item, number zero-five?
Good evening, Planted Commission, my name is Peter Harpster, I'm with Octara Engineering. Here representing the applicant, and the applicant's actual representative, Caleb Stromstad, was unavailable, and so kind of representing the representative. It's for both item five and six, so everything that I say for item five is true, is item six as well. Proposing a land use change from low-density residential to medium-density residential. For this one, the next one will be the land use change from commercial to mixed residential commercial. We're in favor of this proposal and believe that it is consistent with the goals and policies contained in the comprehensive plan, as well as city council goals. Both proposals meet the evaluation criteria, all five. Won't go through them one by one. Commissioner Coggin did ask about the two separate applications, and like Mr. Gonzalez stated, just because of two different land uses that we're proposing. Would have been nice to do one of half the paperwork, but don't mind doing it. Yes, our ask tonight would just be for the Planted Commission to recommend approval to council for inclusion on the official docket for consideration as we go out throughout the year. Happy to answer your question.
Thank you. Any questions from the Commissioners? Okay, anyone else, thank you for being here. Anyone else to speak on these, might as well group them together, items five and six? Okay, I guess we'll move on to number seven. The Mullen Amendment. Anyone here to speak on the Mullen, item seven? Okay, hearing none. Second call for the Mullen. And third call for Mullen. All right, let's move on to item eight. The Blake Amendment. Anyone here to speak on the Blake Amendment? Go for number, called second call. And a third call. Okay, let's move on to item nine. Item nine is the Alfred Amendment. Anyone have here to speak on this one, item nine?
Good evening, my name is Kenton Alfred, eight-five-zero-three Nash Drive, Pasco. Just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to talk to you today. And we just wanted to change the amendment from low-density to mixed residential, basically to support the efforts of the city of Pasco with what it is that they're looking for. We know that the number of residents is increasing, and we want to be able to have the land use changed so that we can accommodate whatever the city's needs are at the time, whether that be low-density, mixed residential, or commercial. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the Commissioners? All right, thank you. Anyone here else to speak on item number nine, the Alfred Amendment? And finally, the third call? All right, let's move to ten. The McClory Amendment. Anyone here to speak on this item?
My name is Scott Howell, live in Richland, Washington, and I am actually standing in for co-applicant Elliot Smith. And I'm also a commercial real estate broker. So first off, thank you for being here, the, to all members of the commission. From two thousand and ten to two thousand and twenty, Franklin County was the fastest-growing in the state of, in the state. And Pasco anchored that as a main driver with close to eighty thousand residents. I'm Pasco resident, born and raised. I live in Pasco along with my wife Chrissy and our son Monty. I've watched growth firsthand. This growth hasn't come without some big challenges, with the main one being that housing that is affordable to the majority of residents does not push to East Pasco. Housing for working families seems to be an afterthought. We've been dictated, we have small families that have been dictating pricing, supply, and type since nineteen ninety, starting with Road sixty-eight. This, not like Road forty to Road one hundred, where there are multiple small parcels owned by longtime residents. With not pushing infill growth, we put our city in a tough spot. In it, in this comp plan, high-density residential zoning was once again pushed to Road sixty-eight, Road one hundred, and East Pasco, with the land in East Pasco, they have ninety percent housing structures on them. At this point, these properties are still more valuable for the owners to sell with the house than they are for infill redevelopment. This piece of property would be a huge step in the right direction to serve the missing middle residents of Pasco, with multiple access points to minimize traffic, two separate freeway access points, three schools, including CBC, and all less than a mile away. After going through the updated comprehensive plan multiple times, it's clear that this property hits on multiple goals. With the number one goal of this commission to provide adequate and affordable housing and reduce urban sprawl, I believe this property satisfies what everyone's trying to achieve. Let us be your partner in this to help move closer to having a city that is inclusive of all residents.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any questions? All right, thanks for coming tonight. Anyone else to, here to speak on item number ten? There we go.
Good evening, I'm Rod McClory, Richland, Washington, I'm the co-applicant. Just to reiterate a few points that my co-applicant had to say. We want to take the vacant commercial infill property and fill it in with some multifamily housing to provide some support for the local growing jobs with Amazon, Reasers, Dairy Gold, and local bounty that we've all heard from. We also believe that the property provides some great walkable connections to the Court Street and the surrounding established retail establishments. Thank you.
All right, thanks for coming. Okay. Anyone else want to talk about this item? All right, come on in.
My name is Carolyn Beck. I live at the corner of Pearl and Twenty-fourth, right in the area of where the cross, where the only entrance to this new housing, high-density residential would be built, along with Opal Street. That I'd like to correct, that there is not, there's an entrance from Court Street that goes up Twenty-fourth. You could take Opal there, or you could take Pearl Street. So that means we're going to open up two quiet residential areas to an amazing amount of traffic that we were just recently, we've lived there forty years, we love the neighborhood. We recently absorbed some duplexes on the end of the street. We have duplexes, many, many apartments, church, school, nursing home, retirement center, and we have a little residential area around it. And the traffic is increasing daily, and I cannot see that, there's a hundred, it looks like there'd be a hundred and seventy-eight residents, probably two cars per person. probably two cars per person. I don't see how that that area can absorb four hundred more cars with the only entrance be from Court Street and Pearl Street, from the, from those areas. The, uh, the other access from Court Street goes through private property, um, tie light, past the costless carpets. And so my, our objection as residents there, who've lived there in our family homes for many years, would be that, um, that, that is too much for one little community to absorb in high-density. I would say that we would be happy to absorb, uh, low-density or a medium-density, but high-density is just a little too much for those few streets. I guess I should have counted how many little streets there are and how many hundreds of people live in that area. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. All right, anyone else here to speak on item ten? All right, with that, I think we'll move on to item eleven. Also, uh, anyone here to speak on item eleven?
Good evening again. I'm the applicant on the, on this parcel as well. Speaking as the applicant and, uh, as a resident in the immediate vicinity, um, I want to speak in support for this project. Um, currently what we have is, uh, commercial, uh, butting up against low-density residential, um, es- oh, especially up north and, uh, even to, immediate to the west. There's already, uh, developed parcels there, um, people with, uh, half-acre lots, one-acre lots, and, uh, switching it to mixed, uh, residential, commercial, it gives, uh, flexibility to transition that area better from commercial to low-density, rather than having commercial butt up right up against, um, low-density. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, or any others that wish to speak on item number eleven? Last call?
Andrew LaBrentev, sixty-nine, twenty-seven Lamp Court. So, funny story, I jumped the gun and went up on, on the wrong amendment. So my property...
So you didn't support the other one that you did?
No, forget about the other one. Uh, so no, on this one, my property does bump up against them, low, low-density. Um, I would, uh, obviously rather have re- residential, uh, the property butting up against my cul-de-sac other than commercial. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, last call on item number eleven. All right, let's move to twelve.
Good evening. My name's Laura Dynas, and I live just one block wha- um, west of this proposed change. Um, speaking for my husband and myself, we've lived in our home thirty-four years. It was our American dream. Um, you can do the math. I bought it when we were in, I went when I was nineteen. It's been the only home I've ever had. And I don't, I'm very concerned, I'm adamantly opposed to this change. Uh, vehemently opposed. How many more adjectives can I come up with? Um, it's just going to change the whole nature of everything. I'm concerned about the high level of traffic. I'm concerned about, um, the establishment of the way the, the, um, single-family homes have been in this area, however many long years. Uh, and along that line, if, if the area was going to be, if that property was to be used for single-family homes, I'd feel a lot better about it, assuming, making some guesses about homeownership, making long-term residence and stability. That's what I have to say.
All right, thank you for being here and voicing your opinion. Anyone else? All right, come on up. Oh, couple.
Good evening, my name is Jim Hilgartner. I've lived in this area for about twenty years. My main concern about this proposal is lack of access to the property. If anybody has been through there, the only access to that property is between two houses. It's a narrow driveway between two of the houses on Hopkins Street. There's no way you could put a high-density facility in there and have access to it without buying, um, somebody's house to pro- to provide a way to get to it. Second, everything around there is rural. It's a, high-density's development in that area would not be harmonious at all. Plus Moore Mansion, historic Moore Mansion, it's right next door. Would not want to have a, an apartment building next to, uh, a historic building like that.
Thank you. Come on in.
My name is Alicia Greenway. I live on Road thirty-four, five houses up from this property. Uh, first of all, I'd like to say, Commissioner Campos and Bowers, it's nice to see you again, even though you're not here. And the new commissioners, thank you for serving. One thing that Jacob did not mention, this has come before this board, before all you new members do not know that, and it was shut down. It was shut down because, as you know, as I've sat on this board, you cannot put high-density next to likeness. You have to put it next to likeness. This is old residential, half-acre to acre lots. High-density does not fit in this area. Next, you'd have to go to medium-density, and you know this. It's in the codes, it's in your, your books. You can't put high-density in this area. It just doesn't fit. The, these houses have been here in the fifties. It doesn't work. You have no access, this is landlocked piece of property. They have to figure out how to buy other people's homes to even put two accesses into it. That's their problem. So you have to deny this to even get it, before it can go to the city council. It can't go past you guys, and they know this. It's been rejected before. It can't move further. And it would be foolish on your part to make it go any further when it has been denied, and you know your codes. You cannot stick high-density in old, low-density area. Any questions?
Commissioners, any questions for the presenter? Uh, maybe I'll ask a question for staff, for Jacob, and a question for you. The presenter discussed that it has been rejected, obviously not part of the recent cycle, but many cycles ago, at some point?
Yeah, yeah, it, it has not been proposed as a land-use amendment. However, uh, this predates my time, I believe in early twenty-eighteen, there might have been a rezone that she's referring, that the commenter is referring to, um, in front of the planning commission, um, but not an amendment that we've entertained. So I'll clarify that.
Okay. Thank you. A- and keep in mind, too, um, it's important, we're not making a decision now, tonight. We're making a decision whether it goes on the docket, whether it gets studied.
Right.
And any action on the land would actually go through the permitting and all those processes. So there's lots of gates before houses just...
Oh, I know, I've sat, I sat right next to you for over ten years.
All right. Commissioners, any questions for the commenter, presenter? All right, hearing done, thanks for coming. All right, anyone else to speak on this item, number twelve?
Good evening. I just wanted to note that, uh, it's rare these days when you have public servants, elected officials, who are, uh, responsible and respectful enough to recuse themselves when they have a, a conflict on an issue, and I want to thank Mr. Handler for doing that. As a county commissioner, I've done it a couple of times, and sometimes it begs the question, I get asked, well, well, what's your conflict? So respectfully, might I ask, what, what is your conflict that makes you feel uncomfortable or needing to be recused? I, I want to be respectful and not get into areas that would conflict you.
Basically, um, Mr. Peck, I ha- am doing work closely with Dennis Giesi, Johnny L. Scott.
Okay.
Yeah, we're doing development work, and we are intimately aware of this project.
And, and I have spoken with Mr. Giesi, too, so I understand the, the connection, and it's, it's a, I would personally say it's a minor conflict, so kudos to you for being so professional as to recuse yourself over something so minor.
Thank you, Mr. Peck.
I promise to try and distinguish what hat I'm wearing. This one, it's a little tough, and apologies in advance if I run a little long, but I'll try to keep it concise. Um, the Moore Mansion is a National Historic Registered property. It is immediately adjacent. In nineteen oh-eight, when it was built, it was a twelve-hundred-acre farm, and the path to Pasco was literally a path about two to three miles away. Over time, this property has been subjected to what, now, I hate to use the term, but I would call it development offense or, or abuse. Uh, first, it was the federal government coming in with an eminent domain taking, and they took the shoreline away from this property, and they built a massive levee. And then after that, the state came in and they wiped out Road thirty-two and put in three ninety-five across the doorstep of the place and built the bridge. And really, all that's left of the character of the place is the structure itself and the neighborhoods surrounding it, which came to be probably in the, some of those houses were there in the twenties. A lot of them came in the forties and fifties, but they are largely three-quarter acre, what I would almost call horse properties. Many of the people have horses, they're large lots, single-family. It is a highly constrained neighborhood. There's no way out to the south, you've got the river. There's really no way out to the east, you've got the highway. And, uh, as has been previously mentioned, this did come up. Uh, I was here in this room at the time that it came up for a, uh, a rezone application, and there was a, uh, a request to make it, uh, mixed-use, commercial, and, and residential, which is why earlier I asked, what does the city consider mixed-use? And it clearly includes high-density. I knew that, but I needed that to be part of the record as well. Uh, I think that, uh, the notion, as we weigh the various interests of the Growth Management Act and what the goals and objectives of the city are, uh, we're all kind of leaning forward in this notion that we've got all the people coming in, we've got all the jobs, and we need places for people to live. And I'm telling you, with close to three hundred acres identified just tonight, there can be various forms of housing. Not to mention, out of the twelve-hundred acres up at Broadmoor, there's a, a massive complex of apartments scheduled to go in there, the Brochi one we already talked about. Um, so I would urge you not to, uh, be taken in by the notion that, under the Growth Management Act, we have to do infill. Infill has to be done responsibly, and you simply cannot go in and abuse the investment, financial and emotional, the decades of history of people who have lived in that area from the forties, and now simply come in and slap in what is potentially hundreds and hundreds of apartments. Under the high-density, those buildings can be forty-five feet tall, which, under our code, would allow four stories to be developed. And, uh, there, there was a time when, uh, Paul Miles and I stood in this very room, and, and in fact, it was the negotiation over the rezone request. And, uh, he acknowledged that the reason they wanted the rezone was because, for the amount that they had paid for the dirt, to build single-family homes simply didn't pencil out. They needed high-density. Well, I'm here to tell you, the Growth Management Act and this comprehensive plan and the rezone process do not exist to make profits for developers. And I, there's a lot of developers that I know, and, and I love them all, and I respect them all, but that is not the function of the Planning Commission, it's not the function of the Growth Management Act or the zoning process. Uh, it's unfortunate that they, they got into it at a point where it's difficult to develop and to have it pencil out, but, uh, I know that this is a lengthy process, this is just the first step, and this is when we, uh, when you will decide whether or not this warrants a study. And quickly, I'll wrap up. I'll note that I'm curious to know if the DNS considered the possibility of federal funds being involved, which would kick in the National Historic Preservation Act and require a section one oh-eight consultation for, I think it's one oh-eight, no, it might be one oh-six, it's been a while. Um, I bought the Moore Mansion in two thousand and four, when the city was about to demolish it. I invested well over a million dollars of, of my own input into it to save it, to restore it. And yes, I'm very passionate about this. You will see me many times, but this, if there's any place in the region for infill that is grossly inappropriate with high-density development, it's that parcel. So thank you very much for giving me just a little bit of extra time, and, uh, and again, Mr. Handler, thank you for your professionalism.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else here to speak on this item, or any questions that have come up for commissioners? We have someone to, commenter to speak, thank you.
I'm Sean Scarrow, I live on Hopkins. I just want to say I oppose this.
Sorry, just, you oppose it?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Shae Fermina, I live on, uh, Hopkins Street as well. Um, first of all, I'd like to say, uh, nice to see a lot of my, uh, neighbors here. Um, good to see. Uh, I have a lot of respect for everyone in this room, especially my neighbors, and, uh, I think that, um, I guess my view on this is, uh, this is just one of the gates. It sounds like if this has been proposed before, then yeah, it should be stricken, but if it hasn't been proposed before, I think we should let it go so that it can be, uh, stricken. Um, I think there's, uh, a lot of, uh, analysis that, uh, can be done and will be interesting to see. Um, I think just, uh, personally, um, I, uh, would really like to see some, um, some research done to back up, uh, some views of what this would be appropriate and what would not be appropriate, but, um, like I said, uh, if this has already, if this has grounds to be stricken, then yeah, go ahead. Um, again, emphasizing the, uh, uh, respect and appreciation I have for my neighbors, and, um, hope everyone has a great day. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, uh, last call to speak on this item? All right? Go for it. Oh, we got a couple, great.
My name is Raymond Salinas. I live at thirty-three, twenty West Hopkins. Uh, as the, my neighbor said, that in order to, for this to even happen, city would have to buy somebody out, and that house would be mine, because I live on thirty-four in Hopkins. So, and as Mr. Peck said, I bought Mr. Mills' house, Miles' house. So, that being said, I oppose the, what you guys, what's forth here. So, and, and I will not sell. So, um, that being said, low-density, I don't mind. Medium and high-density, keep it out.
Thank you for being here. Yeah, sorry, we'll, we'll, we'll be a little more deliberate and slower so the clerk can keep up with names and cities' address. Sorry about that.
Pamela Griffin, thirty-four oh-six West Hopkins. I live right next to Ray, and I would be right on the road that they would have to put in. And I oppose the project. We bought this house because of the tranquility of the area, and we came to, from Japan to buy it. So I don't want an apartment complex right over my fence.
Thank you. All right.
My name is Sandra King, and I live at two hundred, Road thirty-four. Um, we are the new owners of the Moore Mansion. I obviously bought the mansion, um, thinking we were going to have a nice neighborhood, quiet, and not high-density. So I do not favor, um, obviously. I would be fine if it was low-density, if it stays the way it is, but, um, um, it's not favorable for us and for the neighborhood. Um, thank you very much.
Thank you for being here. All right. Lots of passion on this one. Anyone else want to speak?
Good evening, planning commissioners. My name's Shane O'Neill, six-nine oh-four Rogue Drive with Clover Planning, prior City of Pasco, Planner One. I'm representing Lionel Singleton and World Builders on this application. I'm representing Lionel Singleton and World Builders on this application. I have a brief question is, will the city council hearing be at open record? Thank you. Uh, although some of my information here doesn't strictly adhere to the criteria that are necessary to place this item on the docket, I'll take the opportunity to run through them real quick since we have such a large audience. Excuse me. So, um, tonight's hearing is for a comprehensive plan amendment, uh, not a rezon or a specific development proposal. Our rezon application will be forthcoming. The rezon process will involve a public hearing where more detailed concerns can be addressed at that time. World Builders proposes to convert the comprehensive plan land use designation of six adjacent parcels, totaling five point eight acres from low-density to high-density residential. Our site is vacant land immediately west of the Moore Mansion located on the south side of West Hopkins Street. The site is very near Sylvester Street and Highway three ninety-five. These are major transportation corridors, thereby satisfying comprehensive plan land use policies two A and four B, which explicitly encourage high-density or higher-density residential developments and land uses near major travel corridors. Our site lies fourteen hundred feet south of Sylvester Street and only four hundred feet west of Highway three ninety-five. Uh, site development with multi-story residential buildings will maximize river views experienced by future residents, whereas a single-family neighborhood, only the riverfront properties benefit from those river views. Our development will increase the recreational opportunities by providing direct access to the Sacagawea Heritage Trail, which is a significant goal of the Washington Shoreline Management Act. Providing increased residential densities without expanding the urban growth boundary satisfies urban infill goals of the Washington State Growth Management Act. Granting our comprehensive plan amendment will make future annexations in Pasco less vulnerable to denial if appealed on the basis of residential density. With Washington State House Bill twenty-four thirty-seven likely to be enacted by the legislature, approval of our request will foster compliance with directives therein by encouraging investment in affordable and supportive housing. RCW, uh, eight, uh, twenty, excuse me, RCW eighty-two fourteen will be amended that thereby. Our application is also in the spirit of House Bill twenty-seven eighty and Senate Bill sixty-five thirty-six, which requires cities to allow multifamily housing in what were previously single-family zones. You may be familiar. Some of the public comments responding to our application express concerns over site access or traffic. The detail of site-specific site access is outside the scope of a comprehensive plan amendment. The necessary land use designations must be established before developers will be positioned to invest in site design. The city has codified access standards that will ensure site access is adequately developed. World Builders is not proposing a residential subdivision. This should be a relief to neighboring residents. A residential subdivision of our site would require construction of new public roads through the site, causing much more significant disruption to the neighborhood's existing character and traffic patterns of the vicinity. Instead, our development anticipates relying on a series of access easements, which are more flexible in their design and location than public roads. Commenters claims that if developed, our site development proposal will diminish the property values of homes in the vicinity. This claim is not supported by Franklin County Assessor Records. Property values of homes adjacent to residential apartments are consistent with the values of comparable homes surrounded only by other single-family homes. The crossings at Chapel Hill, for example. The accusation that people in apartments don't care, take care of their property the way balance of homeowners do is confusing. Residential apartment sites employ the service of professional groundskeepers and maintenance staff. It's not the responsibility of the residents to maintain a property like this. Instead, property managers ensure the site is maintained to high standards, which they, which is rarely the case with owner-occupied, single-family homes. Our development will ensure robust landscaping buffers with trees and shrubs installed adjacent to the rear yards of neighboring homes, which will vastly improve the backyard experience of the, the existing neighbors. Some commenters raise a series of questions. Those people are welcome to contact the applicant team using the contact information listed in our application. I understand that oftentimes residents or owners of properties adjacent to vacant land are upset by a development proposal of the vacant site. However, it is not reasonable to expect for vacant parcels within one of city, within of Washington's growth bound, urban growth boundaries to remain vacant. This is partly because Washington's Growth Management Act somewhat forcibly encourages higher urban residential densities within cities. In my personal and professional experience as a city planner, the initial disruption of site development, although emotional, is quickly forgotten once a project is complete and that the adjacent neighbors end up appreciating the improvements associated with high-quality development as compared to the once vacant site. Uh, for the point of the Planning Commission consideration, a quasi-judicial land use decision like this is not a popularity contest. It, it's strictly bound by the criteria that you pointed to tonight. We meet all of those criteria. Um, I encourage you to review our application materials in detail as well as the public. Those are public records available to better understand the ways our application satisfies city and state criteria for this item to go forward. I'll save other information for the, the, uh, council hearing. I have with me tonight Lionel Singleton. He is a representative or, uh, owner of World Builders and he's your primary applicant on this item.
Um, like you said, I appreciate it again. Uh, my name is Lionel Singleton. Um, eleven forty-eight Columbia Park Trail, Richland, Washington. Um, just a little small story, because I, I feel like it was a lot of negative energy coming in from me coming here and trying to, to develop a, a piece of property. Um, I moved up here like in two thousand and nine, been staying in Pasco for a long time. I started a whole bunch of after-school programs for kids up in, in, in Pasco and tries, and Washington, Richland, Washington and Kennewick. Um, there's a lot of different things that I, I, I kind of came here for. And one of the opportunities that I got was to play football. I was, um, staying honestly homeless at one point and I got a phone call that said, hey, we have a apartment for you to live up here, just come play football one more time. And so me being in, my, my family has been developers for a long time. My, they build schools, they build apartments. Um, I had an opportunity to come up here and with my after-school program, with me doing some things in Pasco, uh, remodeling some homes, giving some families an opportunity to go stay. I actually have, uh, we built some apartments in Richland, Washington. Uh, we did a twenty-four units on the water and actually it's, it's two point eight acres on the water and we could do a hundred and twenty units. Um, and actually we did our first twenty-four and we got five extra parking spaces. And also the neighbors that came in and sitting here and kind of encouraged, we, I talked with every neighbor just to make sure, hey, what do you want? What do you want to sit here and kind of have here? All right, we don't want to do this many, but we could do this many. You want a wall here, we could put a wall here. You have a tree right here, you want to put a tree here? Because I'm just trying to give, bring opportunities. And just for that being said, um, I had one of my students that I have worked with back in, in, at Pasco, come in, their family was struggling and I actually got them approved to move into the, the apartment. Um, I have some friends that came to move in town and I just think these opportunities for this apartment to be built on the water, I'm actually from Florida. Um, so I, I played, um, everything on the water is real nice. And I understand that you have a, 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 a significant piece that's there. Um, I had this, I've been working on this opportunity for almost eighteen months. I've been walking, working on this opportunity, just tried to come over here on the water. But through things getting denied, then through, you'll say, not having the financials and everything like that, I finally got an opportunity for the old owners or whatever to pass this land on to try to get something developing. I don't know what happened between the old owners and, and the new, the, the residential people or the people, neighbors and things like that. But I just wanted to kind of, you'll say, come up here and say my piece of what we kind of plan on doing. Plan on bringing up a great opportunity, um, housing, um, to, to the riverfront. And I think we're not trying to do mixed use. I think they said mixed use, I didn't even know what was going on even before that. They said mixed use, we're not trying to do mixed use and do commercial and residential. We're just trying to bring opportunity, a hundred and, a hundred and, you'll say, twenty, a hundred and thirty apartments. And we could do, like I said, in Richland, we have two point eight acres and we have a hundred and, a hundred and twenty-four and it's on waterfront. Waterfront is a zoning, I've been getting a lot of calls from the City of Pasco or other people that are trying to say, hey, what is this waterfront zoning in Richland, Washington? And as you can see, some of the plantings and stuff like that on the water, you have mixed use. And you want to kind of bring something, some lively to, to the water. We just want to do something, uh, residential, give people opportunity to, 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 um, to stay there, to have a, a beautiful view. And like, um, my, my, like Shane said, you can, you can build something, uh, you have the, the, the road, the highway there. You have the great views, um, whatever the, the neighbors and things want to call, talk to. I know I didn't come in and say something to the neighbors, which was my plan, but honestly, I didn't even know this deal was going to go through until last week. Um, so I kind of did it by faith to come out here and try to develop it. As y'all can see, uh, we, I, I, I'm a, a, a person here and wanted to just kind of express myself and let everybody know that I think this is a, a great opportunity. And even to have someone that's willing to invest into this, this property, even to bring in a twenty million, three, thirty million dollars to build something, to bring in maybe however many people that could kind of stay here, I think is a great opportunity. And just kind of just looking at some of the, the layout, the, the, the site plan, um, it has a little piece that goes into, I guess, the next-door neighbors' Moore Mansion. And I, I, I think that was said a long time ago, that was supposed to be a piece to connect the roads for, it could be an easement in there. And I don't know what happened with the, the previous owners, something like that, but now that's kind of, I don't know if that's out, I don't know if that's something that we need to dive deep until you see what that easement would be. But it could easily be, hey, like, it's, it's almost an acre in someone's yard, basically. So I don't know what we would kind of do with that and that's something that I would have to kind of go out there and talk some more with the next-door neighbors. But just wanted to kind of, like I said, express myself, let it know that I'm a big part of this community. I'm, I'm doing some, um, some great things. I have some great cre, creative activities and if we can partner some type of way, at least go and let it be, um, go to the next level to kind of sit there and see what can we do with this? Instead of just kind of like, hey, we don't want to talk to it no more. We don't want to say it's denied and not go. And because everybody's saying it hasn't went to the next level, uh, we would like to see what can happen. And I would like to sit there and talk with every neighbor and see what is their ideas. And I, so I heard it from them, they want to be low-density or, or whatever situation might be. But like I said, if we do single-family, we're going to have big roads coming through there. Uh, we could add a little bit more and it's going to give more people opportunity. So I appreciate it and if any questions, let me know.
Thanks for coming. Any questions from the commissioners? All right, please be brief.
Uh, I will, um, but it's on point. The historical reference to a piece of land extending into the Moore Mansion is not an acre, it's actually point two-three. Adrian Bird, who previously owned the property that is under consideration and the, at the time, owners of Moore Mansion had arranged for a short plot of the property for single-family homes. And that piece was to be a connector between the two lots and for a drive. But to be clear, and this is the point that I think needs to be heard, um, the plot was never approved. No streets, easements or roads were ever affirmed or committed and, uh, there aren't any to this day. And then lastly, I'll just note that one of the requirements, as I understand from, uh, Jacob, for this to move to the docket is that the city has to have the necessary policies and mitigation tools in place to implement the request. I respectfully submit, you do not have the tools, mitigation and policies in place to deal with the only privately-owned National Historic Registered Property that is operating under city-approved conditional use permits that will be impacted by this action. So were you to put this on the da, docket, you would be impinging on the CUPs that you've already approved for that property. So I don't think you have the tools. You'd have to work with the, uh, State Historic Preservation Office with Dr. Brooks in Olympia and probably, uh, very well may end up in an EPO process. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else on item twelve? Please be brief.
Yes, Shane O'Neill, um, Clover Planning. The fact that the Moore Mansion has a special use permit approved to have an event center has no bearing on neighboring properties. Neither does the historic, uh, registration of the Moore Mansion. This development is proposed outside of the boundaries of the Moore Mansion and it will not revoke the Moore Mansion's historic status or revoke or infringe upon their ability to operate their event center as approved by the city and their special use permit. Thank you.
Thank you.
And one more last thing, I just, um, I know they have Columbia River Walk Apartments right on the other side, like right across on the other side of the bridge that just got, is doing apartments over there. And I think they're already full and going to the next phases and everything like that. So if we're, if you want to kind of look, hey, there, there's some apartments over there and we can have apartments right across from here as well. So just wanted to kind of throw that out as well.
But I believe that's medium density.
Medium, okay.
Right. Okay. Right, a lot of good discussion. Thank you for both sides and, uh, I think we're going to move on. We had several calls for this one, so, um, we'll move on to item thirteen. Uh, these are all the cities, right? And so we, they are on the docket. Um, do we have folks speaking on these or?
We, we did receive comments on a few of these. Uh, most of them were a clarification, um, with regards to what the proposal stood for. Um, a learn, a lesson learned for staff to be more descriptive and detailed in our public notices. Um, so we'll make that change in the future. Um, but we didn't, on this particular proposal, uh, we did not receive any comments in opposition, uh, simply inquiry in nature.
Well, go ahead and ask if there's anyone here to speak for, on this item thirteen. Uh, now's the time. Second call. And third call. All right, let's go ahead and move to the next city item. I think the rest of these are city items, right? So, night, the Broadmore Master Plan, item fourteen. Uh, is there anyone here to speak on item fourteen? Second call for item fourteen.
So this is right in my current neighborhood. I just had a question for staff. Uh, do we have any recent understanding of the number of, um, high-density apartment units are programmed into this twelve hundred acre piece? I know there's an eighty-acre lifestyle mall issue at play. I know there's Costco, but behind that, I understand there's a large number of apartments. Do we know?
No, I, I would be remiss if I offered any kind of speculation on that.
There, there is a project though for housing.
Uh, there is a project near Burns Road, roughly, um, eighteen hundred feet or so west of Broadmoor. Although they have not submitted a permit application.
Okay, thank you. His reference to eighteen hundred feet reminded me, I did forget to mention one thing. Uh, while the subject of number twelve may be just four hundred feet off of three ninety-five, you don't get there without driving all the way up Sylvester and then over the freeway and then onto the ramp. And the state indicates no plans to put a ramp or a, a interchange there. The land has been sold around it.
Thank you. All right, anything else on item fourteen? Here for item fourteen, for the Broadmore Master Plan?
That's correct.
Okay. State your name and city of address.
Good evening, Commissioners and administrative staff of Pasco, which I've been before many times and I really appreciate your patience with me. My name is Cynthia Muse. I live at two sixty Ridgeview Drive out in the county. For sixty-five years, we've been out that way. And I also spend most of my time at one oh eight one-sixth West Court Street in Pasco, where my ninety-eight-year-old father lives and I'm a caretaker for him. And, uh, because of him and his passion for open space, uh, visual and physical access to the river and shoreline, he does live on the river, uh, and his philanthropic efforts to obtain land and open space for all people, I am here and motivated as ever to, as long as he lives for sure, uh, to help promote this along. And thus the, uh, group SOS, Save Our Shorelines, was formed because of my dad's inspiration to us. And as we look at this Broadmoor plan, we're moving upriver from the old Franklin County Irrigation District fight that we had one year ago and, uh, still working on that one as a possibility, maybe of, of still some open space there. Uh, if someone turns back one of those lots. But, uh, at the Broadmoor Div- Uh, if someone turns back one of those lots. But, uh, at the Broadmore development. You in the city of Pasco have done a world-class job of making industrial and commercial sites. Just beyond description. And now you've raised the bar pretty high and we are waiting for that in West Pasco, as far west as you can go. Especially when it, uh, it includes wide open space like this that, that really, we only have one chance at this and we got to be careful with it. And so that, as we look at that area, we can't, I don't think we can apply any other kinds of river access or river use. To that area because it's so unique. We've got the mighty Columbia River and, and the slowing of that velocity of riser, uh, river around that bend. And that habitat wildlife area and the old, uh, highway that's, that, and, and the Oregon, uh, Galant and Burns people that are all very, uh. Old pioneer, you know, ways and, and names and things out that way. And so we got to really be careful about the, your mixed use, uh, commercial mixed bag, which really worries me. Too close to that habitat area. And in your own plants here, you know, I go through things pretty thoroughly here. And, you know, you've got your grid work and you've got it a bit mixed up. To me, I think it should be open space, which is that ha- animal habitat area. We need the trails right next to that on the old shoreline road, disabandoned that for recreational use and reroute it back. What, behind Galant's there. Let's see, um, it, we need open space. We need the trails next to that. And then the gradient, we need the greenways. We're moving from west to east. We need every, um. Uh, greenways, we need parks and then we need the playgrounds and then we get into the commercial development and housing where you have plazas and things. So it should be a, a gradual, um, you know, parallel to the river, a gradual gradient that moves inward. Transition zones, mitigation zones from the loss of that green. Here we go, the loss of that green. Zone and that beautiful pond and everything that were created by the Bureau of Reclamation and that tailwaters in the very end of the SCID. And that has to be mitigated because of the amount of wildlife and beautiful, you know, the dunes are gone now and that pond is gone. All of that needs to be mitigated somewhere. And I'm sure that the Galants and the, the, um, you know, they're wonderful philanthropic people. And I think with being able to work with city and county of federal and, and, um, you know, private monies and. With that, we can get something done there to save that huge corridor. It's going to have to be about twelve hundred feet off the river into. That development in order to, um, in order to, uh, meet the requirements of some of the habitat there and some of the creatures that live there that need. That protection and space. So to allow that, you know, to allow that development to come right up. Into mixed residential and that's wrong in my opinion. And we're certainly. Going to do everything we can to try to change that. And I don't speak, I don't speak out of. Malice or anything to the people that own the, the land there because I'm willing to put my own farm in the Columbia Basin into a conservancy. And, and save it for the future as open space. So I'm not just speaking through my hat on this. Because I could make millions on the property that I have out there in subdivision, but I'm not going to do that. And my dad is philanthropic like this too. So I, I stand as, as concerned. We'll keep fighting for this. We'll keep working with the landowners that are there, uh, good old historic people. Uh, Kristen, Kristen, did you want to speak to? Kristen's our, our, one that's very much an advocate for trails and bicycle and. She's about to go on the Pacific Crest Trail for a month too. Did you want to say something? Thank you.
Sorry, Kristen Anderson. I live on Court Street. I've been there for thirty years. And a fifty-year, um, resident in the tri-cities. And I think Cynthia, uh, summed it up pretty well, so I don't really want to drag on. But I've looked at these plans and I've seen how in all of these, um. All of these applications, there's a lot of talk about residential, uh, land, commercial, high density development. And I'm looking for the green spaces on here and the park space. And I see that it's a very small amount. When we first moved, um, Chihuahua Park existed along the Columbia River. And that was the park that we went to. And we also went across the river to Richland at Columbia Point Park. And I'm seeing lots of development with very little accommodating, um, park space to go with it. And we talk about live, work and play and the creation of homes and the access to work, but I'm not hearing a lot about. The real stuff that helps to make a thriving, healthy, beautiful community. And that is park, open lands. Um, recreational opportunities for our kids and our grandkids. And I really think that the officials who are in this position and the citizens who can band together as well. Need to advocate and have that vision and dedication to create more recreational and park space. Along with this, we see a lot of people going down, um, Court Street and using the Sacagawea Heritage Trail. There's a lot more e-bikes out with the price of gas. People are commuting more and. Uh, people that are not necessarily cyclists are enjoying e-bikes. And other, uh, modes of battery operated transportation and recreation. So I would encourage you to be. Um, advocates for that type of use, um, going forward in Pasco. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. All right, anyone else want to speak on item fourteen?
Shane O'Neal, six nine oh four Rogue Drive, Pasco. I'm speaking on just my personal behalf right now. I have a degree in natural resource planning, a bachelor's of science degree. It's a. Biological science degree from Humboldt State University. And I've been out here, whether that's legal or not, um. This area right here, you know, my comment is generally about the shape of that open space tract. Um, Jacob pointed out that, or, or mentioned that that is sagebrush step habitat. Uh, but I wanted to come up here and describe that it's, it's a more unique. Desert dune plant and animal association. It, it's, it's got succulents. It's, it's got, um, a variety of hawks and. And the, the swallows that, that nest in the, the bankment of the, the, um, gravel pit. They, they use this site. Uh, there's a lot of coyotes out there. Um, it is, is much more than sagebrush step habitat. I encourage you to try to take a walk out there on the north side of the gravel mine. It's, it's unique. So I would like to see that open space area more circular and centralized. It would be a great park or, uh, it's still somewhat, uh, intact and presents a good opportunity for public enjoyment. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else on fourteen?
Good evening and thank you to the city and the commission for having us. My name is Bridgette Galant. I'm the president of Horgan Farms, um, a family business that's existed for four generations. My family settled in Pasco a hundred and eighteen years ago. And we take a keen and personal interest in the success of the city and its community. We appreciate the city of Pasco's efforts in attempting to refine the Broadmore Master Plan. The physical location of the property Horgan Farms owns within the subject area is on the westernmost periphery. Because we have a significant interest and concern that the infrastructure will support the eventual development of the property we own. However, because we lie at the periphery of the project, most development is not imminent. This has given us a concerning perspective on the impact of changes made within the regulatory document, which have had expensive impacts on developments that have already gone underway. Because of this, we encourage the city of Pasco to redouble its efforts in planning on the benefit of the city of Pasco. While being mindful of those private entities who are putting capital at risk. To be able to build a meaningful and complimentary development that our city and all of us would like. The landowners want to be involved in the process and should be given updates as the master plan is being made. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Marla Marvin. Um, I live, uh, eh, ju- just outside of the city limits. And I appreciate your patience tonight. And this is, and you've, you've covered an incredible amount of, uh, of. Well, I've learned so much by, by being here. Anyway, I'm part of, also part of the Save Our Shorelines. And we are begging you to work with nonprofits, landowners. Uh, non gov, the government of Franklin County and the city of Pasco. To really focus on making this one of the best places to live in our, in, in the tri-cities with, um, open, open land. Access to the river and, um, and just a partnership with everybody. So thanks, thanks so much.
Thank you for being here.
Good evening, Jason Maddox. I live at one zero zero six Christopher Lane in Pasco, Washington. Work for PBS Engineering and Environmental and represent Broadmore Properties. I'll keep it very brief. Um, in representation of Broadmore Properties. We just want to lend our support to having this continue forward on the docket and we continue to, uh. Want to find opportunities to partner with the city of Pasco in finding ways to support the Broadmore Master Plan. So thank you.
Thank you very much. And to be clear, the city ones will continue on the docket. So just so you're clear on that. So no worries there. The, this one will continue on the docket. All right, let's move on from item fourteen unless there's anyone else. All right, final call. Let's move to item fifteen. All right, Ramgarh Estates, uh, it, this is also a city? Okay. Gotcha. This is a map correction. Gotcha. Okay. Anyone here to speak on this item?
Good evening, Stephen Baumann again. Live here in Pasco. Um, I spoke with, with Jacob earlier here and indicated that we had discussed this. Um, the intention, and I believe the packet reflects that if you follow the, the tip of my cursor here, that the intention was that. This area here be a part of this map adjustment. And, uh, it showed as just this cul-de-sac. The, the acreage, I believe, reflects this area here and just hope that we can get that adjusted. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I think Jacob answered that earlier. Anyone else on item fifteen? Last call. All right, let's move to item sixteen. Down to two more here, a couple more. Court Street, uh, anyone here to speak on this item? This is also a MAC progress correction as well. Second call. And final call. All right, item seventeen. Okay, item seventeen, the tenth app, South Tenth Avenue. This is a map correction. Anyone else to speak on this item? Second call. And final call. All right, finally, item eighteen. This is really just the table at the end. Anyone have any comments on these updated, uh, things to align with our code? Second call. And final call. All right, with that, um, we will close the public hearing portion of the comprehensive plan amendments and docket. And we will move to trying to make the decisions with the commissioners here. Trying to think about the expedient process. I think we should go back, uh, to the first one. And I think we should, um, maybe what we can do for. Well, let's, first of all, um, as we start each item, this, if, if there's any comments or questions commissioners have after hearing about it, after looking at, about hearing from the. Public on this. Um, and if there's no questions on an item, then I think what we'll do is. We will do a roll call vote on who is for, um, or against moving this forward with study. Does that sound legit? Okay. So first on item number one, which is the Kid, Kidwell Amendment, um, commissioners, are there any comments or questions you have on this item? Um, or questions for staff on this item?
So the, so ultimately, we're going to state whether it should stay or with, or be withdrawn?
Yeah, it'll just mean whether it's, whether it makes it to the docket for steady in the next step or whether it does not e- end up on the docket. And again, note to all the city submissions will end up on the docket, so we don't have to vote on those. Does that make sense, Commissioner Powers?
Yes.
Great. Any questions or, uh, on this one or cons, uh, feedback or questions for staff? Uh, well, my only question about this one, I do, I mean, when I look again, when, also I would refer the commissioners to look at the five questions. Um, the only one that came up for me on this one is, um, this was brought up in the original comprehensive plan. Um, it was a dip, it was withdrawn, so you can kind of technically say it hasn't been, uh, rejected prior, previously. But it effectively had a lot of, uh, opposition at the time. And now it actually has a balance of both opposition and support. Um, so that'd be my only concern about this one is, is, as long as we don't think there's any issues with it has been rejected prior. And, um, I think I'm clear that it technically hasn't. So, is that correct?
That'd be correct.
Okay. All right, anything else on this one commissioners? Um, then we'll go ahead and, uh, I'll ask the clerk to just, uh, for this one, just say. So, I guess, uh, support or no support for adding this to the docket. So, is that good? Or just maybe yes or no for adding to the docket. That'd be easier.
Okay. Tanya Bowers, yes or no?
No.
Abel Campos?
Yes.
Rachel Teal?
Yes.
Jay Handler?
Yes.
And Jerry Cochran?
Yes. Okay, we can move on to item two. Uh, item two is the Jenkleson. Are there any questions or concerns, feedback from the commissioners on this item? All right, hearing done. We'll go ahead and do the roll call vote on this one. Yes or no to, to keep on the docket?
Tanya Bowers?
Yes.
Abel Campos?
Yes.
Rachel Teal?
Yes.
Jay Handler?
Yes.
And Jerry Cochran?
Yes. All right, we're doing good. Hang in there, everybody. I know it's a long night. Uh, item number three, the Brochi. I'm sorry, I'm really bad at the pronunciation here. Any questions or concerns or comments, questions for staff on this one from the commissioners?
So this is Commissioner Bowers. So the determine, the term, determination of significance was issued?
Yes, that's correct, on June seventh.
Commissioner Bowers, do you have any concerns or questions?
No, thank you.
Okay. All right, anyone else? All right, we'll go through the roll call vote and, uh, yes or no to keep it on the docket?
Tanya Bowers?
Yes.
Abel Campos?
Yes.
Rachel Teal?
Yes.
Jay Handler?
Yes.
And Jerry Cochran?
Yes. All right, item number four. Once again, questions for staff on this or comments or concerns? Hearing done, uh, we'll do the roll call vote for item number four.
Tanya Bowers?
Yes.
Abel Campos?
Yes.
Rachel Teal?
Yes.
Yes.
Jay Handler?
Yes.
And Jerry Cochran?
Yes.
All right, on item five, right? And, uh, we have two of these, but we'll do one at a time because we have to. Any questions or concerns or feedback on this from commissioners? Okay, let's do the roll call vote.
Tanya Bowers?
Yes.
Abel Campos?
Yes.
Rachel Teal?
Yes.
Jay Handler?
Yes.
And Jerry Cochran?
Yes.
All right, same thing. Item number six is the second one. Any concerns, questions for staff on this? All right, let's do the roll call vote.
Tanya Bowers?
Yes.
Abel Campos?
Yes.
Rachel Teal?
Yes.
Jay Handler?
Yes.
And Jerry Cochran?
Yes.
Okay, so number seven. Questions or staff concerns on this one? Okay, to the vote.
Tanya Bowers?
Yes.
Abel Campos?
Yes.
Rachel Teal?
Yes.
Jer, Jay Handler?
Yes.
And Jerry Cochran?
Yes.
All right, number eight. Okay, same thing. Questions for staff or concerns? Okay, to the vote.
Tanya Bowers?
Yes.
Abel Campos?
Yes.
Rachel Teal?
Yes.
Jay Handler?
Yes.
And Jerry Cochran?
Yes.
All right, number nine. Same drill. Questions or, or feedback, concerns? All right.
Rachel Teal?
Yes.
Abel Campos?
Yes.
Did I say Rachel first? Tanya Bowers?
Yes.
Jay Handler?
Yes.
And Jerry Cochran?
Yes.
I apologize, it's late.
All right, we're halfway there. Thanks for your patience. This is tedious, I know. Or, uh, Carmen's gonna like dream about this tonight.
I am.
All right, number ten. Are there questions or comments on this one from the commissioners? So, I did, I do have a concern about this one. This is the one that kind of bothered me a little bit because I do think there is an overemphasis on infilling and there's a lot. One of the concerns I have about this whole thing is there's a lot of loss of industrial and commercial at the, and it's, obviously, there's goals around, you know, adding more housing. But I don't, I think we have lots of places to add housing and, and low-income housing and, and even that mixed and high-density housing. So, this one, I was a little bit concerned about this one because I just felt like it's, this is a spot that, so, I will be voting no on this one, but I wanted to just express that I, I didn't feel like this one kind of fit, fit the bill for me. So, any other comments or feedback from, from commissioners? All right, let's do the vote.
Tanya Bowers?
Yes.
Abel Campos?
No.
Rachel Teal?
Yes.
Jay Handler?
No.
And Jerry Cochran?
No.
All right, number eleven. Questions or feedback or comments? Okay, to the vote.
Tanya Bowers?
Yes.
Abel Campos?
Yes.
Rachel Teal?
Yes.
Jay Handler?
Yes.
And Jerry Cochran?
Yes.
All right, number twelve. Uh, questions or comments or feedback? This was a fairly controversial one, so if there's questions or concerns, this'd be a good time to raise them.
This is Commissioner Bowers. I just had a, a question that one of the applicants had, or statement one of the applicants had made. Is the residential, the medium-density residential that has, um, just gone in, is that immediately to the east of the Moore Mansion?
I think they were referring down the other side of the bridge. There was a similar development, right? Correct? They're still here luckily, so.
Well, it's roughly at A Street and Twentieth.
So, Eighth Street and Twentieth, Commissioner Bowers?
Thank you.
Any other questions or feedback, concerns on this one? All right, let's go to the vote.
Tanya Bowers?
Yes.
Abel Campos?
No.
Rachel Teal?
Yes.
Jay Handler?
Yes.
And Jerry Cochran?
No.
All right, number thirteen. Oh, we're into the Pasco. We no longer need to vote. Wow. Uh, we made it.
We did.
Thank you for, Carmen, for that tedious process. I think, uh, did, did all of them remain on the docket except for one?
Yes.
Okay. And which one is not staying on the docket?
Ten.
Ten, okay. Awesome. I think we made through a arduous process. And for those of who came to comment on them, really appreciate your feedback in helping us make those decisions, so. We're no longer in the public comment. I'm sorry.
Okay. We had a recusal who voted on matter. It's recorded, thank you. Sorry.
That's right.
That's true. Would that change the vote?
For which number?
I think it was for number twelve, right?
For Jay.
So, we would have to take his vote out of there.
It would be tough.
I apologize for interruptions.
No, I, I thought.
You're right. It's, you know, it's late. I just.
Yep, that's fair, that's a fair point.
What was the vote then?
It's tied.
Tied. Uh, what do we do at a tie?
Because there's only five, so.
But we lack quorum too then, right?
Quick, quick note of clarification. So, these will, uh, be submitted to the city council as a recommendation. So, city council has final authority.
Gotcha.
On, on the establishment of the docket.
Good, perfect. So, it's just our recommendations and this will go forward as tied. Perfect.
Respectfully, that's not what's advertised, but I'll take it up with the council. Thank you.
Understand. All right, last public hearing item is the Transportation System Master Plan, correct?
That is correct. Um, and, uh, this is in, uh, the city's first attempt at developing our very first comprehensive approach to transportation planning in the community. It's been a, a fairly lengthy process that began with a scope in late 2018. And, uh, we are nearing, um, completion or, and with the final version of it for you this evening. It was attached to your agenda packet, uh, for review. So, um, essentially, this transportation plant, master plan serves as a, sort of a vision, a guide for future transportation investments, uh, to ensure that they align with the community's goals, values, and vision for the future. It has numerous, uh, components of it. We've covered some of these, uh, certainly at the last, uh, public hearing, but definitely over the past few years as well, uh, for public input engagement. Goals and policies are a planned vision. Evaluation of existing conditions and a recommended transportation improvement and standards that the city would use to actually, uh, have our standards, um, in the municipal code to guide transportation planning with development in the future. And on the next slide, um, a framework with how the plan fits within the rest of the regulatory or planning environment, sitting within the State Growth Management Act under our Comprehensive Plan, nesting within, uh, council goals and policies and associated with capital facilities plans, et cetera. So, um, the goals, um, remain, uh, to, uh, coordinate with regional partners on shared transportation investments, uh, provide safe access to transportation for all of our users, preserve the existing, uh, facilities, and prioritize a connected and efficient transportation system. This helps develop a, uh, transportation system that supports and accommodates, uh, business, visitors, and residents. It also supports healthy and lovable neighbors, uh, neighborhoods in Pasco and develops a, helps develop a complete multimodal transportation system, which is a goal of the Pasco City Council that was recently adopted. So, these are the goals that I just covered. On the next slide, uh, we wanted to remind, because it's been some time, but there was some fairly significant public engagement involvement that took place with this effort. Unfortunately, due to the pandemic, it all occurred online. But we still received, uh, well over two hundred responses. You can see kind of an example that's in the appendix, appendices of the plan itself. Um, we had a technical advisory committee made up of local stakeholders, uh, and agencies, along with the community themselves, a part of the entire process. So, you've seen this, uh, before and it's a pie chart that breaks down the amount of recommended improvements. It's a fairly significant number, total of $665 million. Fifty-six percent for new streets, uh, six percent for bike, pet projects, thirty-one percent for expansions and widening of roadways, less than one percent on traffic studies, plan evaluations, et cetera, and seven percent for, uh, expansions at intersections, multimodal improvements, et cetera. So, the plan does have a lengthy list of proposed projects. Again, uh, updates to the transportation system standards that vary from functional classification system to addressing our freight and goods transportation, uh, routes, access management, street connectivity, mobility targets, and demand management policies. Implementation strategies, um, to adopt is essentially securing the necessary funding for these improvements, implementing the, uh, transportation management tools for our neighborhoods, updating the vehicle mobility standards, updates to the engineering design standards and roadways, bikeways, and walkways, and incorporating these changes into our subdivision regulations. So, it's Title Twenty-One of the Pasco Municipal Code. So, uh, essentially, uh, with a recommendation of approval, the next steps would be to keep this document as, as up-to-date and current as it, as it can, so to be reviewed and updated periodically and tracking our, our progress of the implementation, keeping current with state, federal regulations and potential funding opportunities and aligning this document, uh, under the Washington State Growth Management Act, but also with our, you know, not-too-far-away Comprehensive Plan update due in June of 2026. These are just some results of the recent National Citizen Survey that indicate the community, uh, still, um, has an interest and concerns about, uh, mobility, uh, in Pasco. And on the next slide, um, you can see the community's response with regards to community design with, uh, twenty percent indicating the design has been poor and forty percent indicating it's been fair. We think this, uh, T S and P effort with the implementation can help mitigate some of these in the future. And, uh, that sums up, uh, this very brief presentation. Staff is seeking a recommendation to the city council for the adoption of our first transportation system master plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob. Uh, commissioners, are there questions for staff on, uh, this item before we go to public hearing?
This is Commissioner Bowers. And I, I just wanted to acknowledge, um, all the hard work and vision that went, that, uh, came out of this.
Yeah, agreed. Thank you, Commissioner Bowers. I had a question about, so, on, uh, I was, I, for me, the meat and potatoes is I, I went right to, uh, page thirty-one where you had the, the tables of improvements. And is this, and this is, you know, these were all the money, are these, uh, just proposed? Or are these, like, uh, if this goes forward, all these things are locked in and all this spend is locked in? Or is these just kind of, as you put the plan together, these are the things that, that you're recommending at this time?
Recommended at the time. I think it's also worth mentioning that, that, the, a significant portion of this was developed, um, uh, prior to the recent industrial expansions in the area. So, we've had to add quite a bit to the projected project. But the projects that are on this list will end up in some form or fashion on the annual six-year, uh, Transportation Improvement Plan. And, and those, and portion of those will also end up on the city's capital improvement plan. So, there will be some blending. Uh, what this does do, provide us a little bit of, of a guide with regards to projects. The costs are going to change, though.
Yeah, I guess my question was around, like, is, are, are these a done deal or are there still multiple approvals and council processes that go through to put these, to, to make these a reality?
Yes, definitely. And not only that, but as you look at the extent of the projects, they won't all be, uh, wholly financed by the city. There'll be a combination of, uh, public-private coordination to achieve these, you know, concurrent with development as well.
I think, I think, I, the thing I've noticed is that there's, there's been, I think we even had a workshop on, like, the Broadmoor Transportation. And there's a lot of, uh, different opinions about stoplights here and roundabouts here. And so, it sounds like there's, this is the proposals and recommendations, but there's lots to do before they're reality then. Okay, great. Commissioners, any other questions before we open the public hearing? Okay, with that, um, we'll open the public hearing. And if there is anyone here to speak on, uh, this, uh, agenda item, please, now's the time to come forward. Or anyone on the phone? And again, please state your name and city.
Jason Maddox, uh, 1006 Christopher Lane, Pasco, Washington. PBS Engineering and Environmental. I would want to just, as a civil engineer by trade and somebody who uses transportation master plan documents on a, almost a daily basis, definitely want to lend support to, uh, continuing to foster open and clear communication between city residents, uh, engineering community, and, and all people involved in developing really a robust and, uh, transportation system master plan that, you know, speaks to the, the needs of the community. And, you know, this sort of visioning document and guiding document is vitally important to a, a city maintaining good infrastructure throughout the community. So, we'd want to definitely lend support and, and see this continue to move forward and have great dialogue with the city on this. So, thank you.
Thank you for coming to, to talk about it.
Stephen Baumann, developer here in Pasco. Want to echo word for word what Jason said. Thank you for the hard work from staff on, on putting this together. It really is helpful to have something to, to look down the road and a kind of a template to work off of and, uh, would certainly encourage the fostering of, of, uh, dialogue between the, the community and, and staff. So, thank you very much for that hard work.
Yeah, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this public hearing item? And final call. Anyone else? All right, with that, we will close the public hearing for this item. One of the things, uh, the, the action on this one is staff is looking for, uh, potential recommendation to, to the city council on this. And so, I entertain motions to that effect.
Commissioner Campos, I move to close the public hearing on the Transportation System Master Plan and recommend to the Pasco City Council the adoption of the Pasco Transportation System Master Plan as contained in June sixteenth, 2022. system master plan, as contained in the June 16, 2022, planning commission staff report.
Thank you, Commissioner Campos, do I have a second?
This is Commissioner Bowers, I second.
Thank you, it has been moved by Commissioner Campos and seconded by Commissioner Bowers. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. For the record, it shows that it passed unanimously. All right, I think, if I'm not mistaken, we've come to the night, end of the night agenda, we have no workshop items and no other business. I will, I think that's the last thing on the item, I thank you for the commissioners and for the public that was here, it was a long night, thank you staff for all the work you put into it, and, you want to say something?
Thank you, commissioners, very long night.
All right, with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Jay Handler, commercial, I move to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Commissioner Bowers?
I think we had a collision there, but I think Commissioner Bowers seconded it, so with Commissioner Handler moving, and Commissioner Bowers seconding, the meeting is adjourned, thank you.